Good evening and welcome to Isleta Independent School District's Meeting of the Board of Trustees. The meeting of the Board of Trustees is a meeting of the board that the public is allowed to attend. As provided Isleta ISD Policy BED, we invite members of the public to make comments during the citizens' input portion at the start of the meeting according to the instructions provided with the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen, but may not enter into discussion on matters in citizens' input. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting often attended by students and ask that we all conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of the Isleta Independent School District. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:02 PM. We have a call with Shane Haggerty, Charlie Bustillos, Mike Dwyer, Katherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Chris is running a little bit late, he will be here shortly. And we do have Connie Woodruff, who is unable to join us and is considered excused. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors, reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, and then posting the colors. The colors tonight are being presented by the junior ROTC color guard from Bel Air High School. The color guard commander is Major Robert Lopez IV. The other colored guard members are Captain Hector Fernandez, Cadet Command Sergeant Major Genevieve Cordero, and Cadet First Sergeant Ariana Buenrostro. The pledge leader is Mirami Lopez, who is 13 and an eighth grader at Eastwood Middle School. Will you please stand for the presentation of the colors, the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Pledge of Allegiance, and the moment of silence? Please remain standing until the cadets have departed. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now please join me for the pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Dr. De La Torre, do we have recognitions and introductions this evening?
Yes, good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, esteemed guests, welcome. This evening, I'd like to introduce and invite our Chief Human Capital Management Officer, Mrs. Bobby Russell Garcia, to lead in the recognitions and the introductions.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. We have one recognition for you this evening. At this time, we ask all trustees to please come to the front of the dais for the presentation. Audience members, please remain seated until recognitions are complete. Thank you.
Each January, we proudly celebrate some of the most dedicated individuals in the district, our Board of Trustees. Board members are true champions of public education who work hard to ensure the success of our students, families, and schools. They are dedicated leaders who generously give their time and energy to support our district. And tonight, we come together to recognize their guidance, commitment, and positive impact they make every day. To show our appreciation, students from each learning community have prepared personal words of appreciation and a special gift basket on behalf of our schools for each of our trustees. Let's begin tonight's recognitions with our Area 4 trustee representing the Eastwood area, Mr. Mike Dwyer. Will you please step forward? Joining trustee Dwyer at the basket are students Danica Martinez from East Point Elementary School and Daniela Bustillos from Eastwood Knolls International School, accompanied by our speaker, Eastwood High School student Stephanie Moreno.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stephanie Moreno, and I am the student body president of Eastwood High School. Albert Swizer once said, "The purpose of human life is to serve and to show compassion and will to help others." These words resonate deeply within the Eastwood community, as we are privileged to be guided by Mr. Dwyer, a man who embodies this sentiment. Mr. Dwyer exemplifies unwavering dedication to community service, always lending his support to our goals and dreams. His kindness, encouragement, and immense commitment inspire us to aim higher and to do better every day. While no words or gifts could ever fully express our gratitude, tonight we offer this small gesture as a token of our heartfelt appreciation. On behalf of all troopers, past, present, and future, thank you, Mr. Dwyer, for the lasting impact you've made and still make on our Eastwood community. Go Troop!
Let's hear it again for the troopers. Next, we will honor the Area 2 trustee for the Bel Air area, Mrs. Connie Woodruff. Unfortunately, trustee Woodruff was unable to attend tonight's meeting, but here to share a few words in honor of her service is Bel Air High School student Yanelli Pelayo. She is accompanied by Loma Terrace Elementary School student Marley Truax and Bel Air Middle School student Marco Murillo.
Good evening, Isleta ISD family. I'd like to begin by asking everyone to think back to when we joined this district, whether as a student or employee. We received a warm welcome and a ton of support from the number one district in El Paso. And our amazing board member, Ms. Connie Woodruff, has consistently provided the Bel Air community with the same warmth, guidance, and leadership. We feel loved by her joyful enthusiasm, and without her support, Bel Air would not be an A-rated high school for the first time in its history. Ms. Woodruff, we take pride in being led by you. We thank you for all that you've done for us, and we appreciate your efforts to improve our schools. On behalf of the Young Women's Leadership Academy, Valle Verde Early College High School, and the Bel Air Learning Community, we're so grateful to have you on our team. Go Big Red!
Let's give another round of applause for the Highlanders. Next, we have our Board Secretary and Area 7 trustee for the Del Valle area, Ms. Katherine Lucero. Will you please step forward? Speaking on behalf of the community is Del Valle High School student Stephanie Hernandez. She is accompanied by Del Valle Middle School student Alessandra B. Montoya and Del Valle Elementary student Jade Lynn Gamboa.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Hernandez, and I am the Student Council President at Del Valle High School. It is truly an honor to be here and recognize our Del Valle area trustee and board secretary, Ms. Katherine Lucero. Visionary leadership and commitment have been instrumental in driving our success. Your thoughtful decision-making, generous contributions, and tireless efforts have strengthened our school district and have made a meaningful impact on the communities we serve. Through your leadership of this board, students have continued to excel in academics, athletics, and fine arts, making our presence known throughout the state. I will soon graduate from the finest district in the region, and I am blessed to have been part of something unique at Isleta ISD. Thank you again, Ms. Lucero, for all you've done and continue to do for us. We deeply value your trust, partnership, and we look forward to continuing this journey together. Once again, one family, one destiny.
Let's hear it again for the Conquistadores. Next, we have our Board President and Area 5 trustee from the Hanks area, Mr. Cruz Ochoa. Would you please step forward? Representing the Hanks learning community, our Vista Hills Elementary School students Zariah Velepando and Hanks Middle School students Sofia Alarcon. They are accompanied by tonight's speaker, Hanks High School Student Council President Renata Zapata.
Good evening. It is a privilege to honor our Board of Trustees for their efforts to make our district the best in the region. We're particularly grateful for Mr. Ochoa and the dedication he has continuously shown our students, teachers, and staff. Mr. Ochoa, you have played a pivotal role in our district's success, culminating in an A rating and making our feeder pattern one of the highest performing in the district. We deeply appreciate the time, energy, and passion you invest to ensure our schools thrive on a yearly basis. Your servant leadership embodies the knightly virtues. We value and respect at the Kingdom courage, generosity, and valor. We are grateful for all you do for both current and future knights. As we say in the Kingdom of Champions, we love you, and there's nothing you can do about it.
Let's have a round of applause for the Knights. Next, we have our Board Vice President and Area 1 trustee from the Riverside area, Mr. Carlos Bustillos. Would you please step forward? Here to share a few words on behalf of the learning community is Riverside High School student Haley Muro, accompanied by Riverside Middle School student Marissa Acosta and Thomas Manor Elementary School student Ruben Vasquez IV.
Good evening. My name is Haley Muro, the proud Student Council President at Riverside High School. I'm honored tonight to recognize our school board and in particular, our area's hard-working trustee, Mr. Carlos Bustillos. Mr. Bustillos, you have trusted the teachers and leaders of this great community for years as a former student at Riverside High School, Riverside Middle School, and Cedar Grove, now known as Riverside Elementary. To further demonstrate your passion for Riverside, you chose to live in the area and enroll your children at Riverside High School. Mr. Bustillos, we admire your service. Thank you for being the true definition of a Ranger. We appreciate your unconditional love and generosity towards helping improve our community, and your support and advocacy are the reasons we stand proud of success. Now, as we always say, "We were Riverside then, we are Riverside now, and we will always be Riverside forever." Thank you.
Let's hear it for the Rangers. Next, we have the Area 6 trustee representing the Isleta area, Mr. Chris Hernandez. Would you please step forward? Joining trustee Hernandez at the basket are students Gia Urbina from Isleta Elementary School and Evelyn Rodriguez from Isleta Middle School. They are accompanied by tonight's speaker, Isleta High School Student Body President Daniela Herbert.
It is always a great day to be an Indian. Isleta's spirit of excellence is evident in our teachers, students, and staff, who work tirelessly to ensure that future generations will experience a legacy of pride and excellence. But it is leaders like Artist Chii, Mr. Chris Hernandez, who sustain that legacy by always looking for ways to provide our Indians past, present, and future with the best education experience possible. Mr. Hernandez, we thank you. Thank you for attending numerous school events in our community, for visiting our campuses, and for taking the time to recognize staff at all levels with enthusiasm and contagious smile. Thank you for continuing to share our vision of excellence, and we look forward to your continued service in our community. And remember, once an Indian, always an Indian. Thank you.
Another round of applause for the Indians. Next, we have the Area 3 trustee from the Parkland area, Mr. Shane Haggerty. Will you please step forward? Joining trustee Haggerty at the basket are Parkland Elementary School student Carmel Monjares, accompanied by Parkland Pre-Engineering Middle School student Darren Aleem. Our final student speaker tonight is Parkland High School student Destiny Castro.
Good evening. My name is Destiny Castro, Student Council Vice President at Parkland High School. Tonight, we honor the work of our entire Board of Trustees and our Parkland area trustee, Mr. Shane Haggerty. The Parkland feeder pattern is special. We are nestled in northeast El Paso with a beautiful view of the El Paso Mountains. Mr. Haggerty loves the northeast and represents us with pride, and the Matador community appreciates your unfaltering support. Through your efforts, our learning community has seen improvements in our facilities, safety, athletics, and academics. You truly embody our saying, "To be a Matador is glorious." And your service on the board also resonates with the following quote, "Leaders instill in their people a hope for success and a belief in themselves. Positive leaders empower people to accomplish their goals." Mr. Haggerty, on behalf of our community, administration, staff, and students, thank you for everything you do at the park.
Joining Trustee Haggerty at the basket are Parkland Elementary School student Carmel Monjares, accompanied by Parkland Pre-Engineering Middle School student Darren Aleem. Our final student speaker tonight is Parkland High School student Destiny Castro.
Good evening. My name is Destiny Castro, Student Council Vice President at Parkland High School. Tonight, we honor the work of our entire Board of Trustees and our Parkland area trustee, Mr. Shane Haggerty. The Parkland feeder pattern is special. We are nestled in northeast El Paso with a beautiful view of the El Paso Mountains. Mr. Haggerty loves the northeast and represents us with pride, and the Matador community appreciates your unfaltering support. Through your efforts, our learning community has seen improvements in our facilities, safety, athletics, and academics. You truly embody our saying, "To be a Matador is glorious." And your service on the board also resonates with the following quote, "Leaders instill in their people a hope for success and a belief in themselves. Positive leaders empower people to accomplish their goals." Mr. Haggerty, on behalf of our community, administration, staff, and students, thank you for everything you do at the park.
Let's hear it one more time for the Matadors. Let's give another big round of applause to our wonderful Board of Trustees. Thank you for all you do. This concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
This portion is a citizen's input. And, Mr. Trustee Lucero, do we have citizens' input this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, we have 14 total speakers.
First one.
Our first speaker is Toby Spoon. Topic is Track and Field: Coach Eastwood Situation.
Good evening, esteemed Board members, trustees, Superintendent, Mr. President. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share. And I know it's no secret, I see a lot of Eastwood jackets and representatives here. We're here to kind of stand up for a situation that's come to light. The coach of track and field was suspended for some allegations. Investigation was done. Then he was reinstated. And as an old boss of mine used to say, "It seems like something is raucous in Secaucus." If those allegations were merited, he should still be suspended, without any doubt. The fact that he was suspended and then reinstated shows that there was doubt or some faltering. I want to tell you, my family and I have lived here in this district for 34 years. We love it. We love Eastwood High School. Our son ran track and field. We have known this coach for 20 years. And in Spanish, there's a saying that goes back to Manazuma, putting his feet in the fire. There are very few people in my life that I would put my hand in the fire for, and this coach is one of them. To the extent that my family and I have established a scholarship in his name, full scholarship every year for a student, not an athletic one, but a character scholarship, because of his character. He has set the example. He was one of the major influences in our son's life. And we have continued to support the track and field operations. I just would ask you all, in your responsibility and duty, to delve in a little bit deeper, find out what really is going on. He's a man that we have watched over the years just dedicate himself to the kids. He gets more scholarships for those track and field kids than all the other sports put together. He's dedicated tirelessly, and so I would just ask you all to look a little deeper to find out what is happening at Eastwood High School that's causing this to happen. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Henry Hernandez regarding Ethics: Treatment of Employee Employees.
Good evening, everybody. Everyone. I go by Henry Hernandez or Kiki Hernandez. I'm no longer a parent at Eastwood. I don't really know with respect to the merits of what happened with Mr. McLean, but last week I had reached out to the trustee, Mr. Dwyer, and had some correspondence. And with the gentleman that just spoke, I'm very confident that I know exactly what's going on. This is a retaliation issue. Why I know that? Because I was a Booster Vice President for football. April 17th of last year, I reported that the Booster president was recruiting for Julio Lopez. The investigation was quashed. My opinion is that it was, the narrative was flipped because Kiki's son didn't play. It wasn't about that. It was about a student that was recruited from America's high school that came over for, I don't know, 20-something days. There was a DEC committee meeting. They 365'd him. Mike McLean was the only one who came to my support because he was put pressure by football assistant coaches to execute the PAP reform. "Henry, what's going on?" I told him the merits. "I have a copy of the letter that I sent to Ms. Russell and the athletic coordinator for Isleta," I mean for Secor if you all would like one. Mr. Dwyer has one. But, you know, it's kind of ironic now that almost eight months later, whatever the merits were, now he's handled in this manner because probably he's stuck up in doing the right thing. You know, does he have no First Amendment protection where the public generally gets the benefit of knowing what's going on? Is recruiting allowed or not? I don't think so. So that's really why I feel this has happened. It's to hang the hat on what's convenient. That's the culture now at Eastwood. "Let me be punitive on you. Probably let me write you up. Let me start a file so that you can resign, so that you can retire." I know a lot of people in this town. I was told that's constructive discharge, and it's illegal. And if that's the way they want to handle the culture at Eastwood, I feel very badly for all the constituents that work there, because that's a very bad culture. You know? We need to assess as a community what's important for the students, for the coaches. And by the way, this recruiting's still going on in the Parkland feeder for Eastwood. I found out in November. El Paso's a small, small town. We don't like that. Let's do the right thing. I'm going to conclude with this. Section 1501 Spirit Contest Ethics Code, "Provide support for students and coaches for implementing contests and events. Two, create a climate of professional concern. Two, assure that contests and events are carried on with sound educational qualities as the uppermost priority. And strive to assure that coaches are aware of the letter and intent in UIL Rules and Regulations." Thank you.
Next speaker is Jasmine Knight, YISD EHS Culture.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Knight. It has come to my attention that a couple of schools do not seem to have the best interests of students in mind. School lunches have been cut down to 30 minutes. How can we expect students to have enough time to walk to the cafeteria, eat their fill, socialize, and get back to class in such a short time? At the beginning of the semester, Scottsdale Elementary suddenly stopped naptime for pre-k, and now my niece gets home tired and hungry. As an Eastwood High School alumna, I have hoped for my children to attend YISD schools as I had. I had the most supportive, encouraging, and dedicated teachers and coaches at Eastwood High. Teachers had the support from parents, administration, as well as the autonomy to do what was best for their students. Now, 20 years later, I cannot say the same. After years of hearing what teachers go through, coaches, and seeing the negative effects on students, athletes, I have decided to homeschool my child. At Eastwood High, I believe the principal does not treat teachers as professionals and are often used as passives for the feelings of the administration. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Felipe Rivas, EHS Cross Country and Track Culture.
Good evening, Dr. De La Torre, Board members, guests, and Eastwood Cross Country/Track and Field. My name is Felipe Rivas, and I am a 2022 graduate of Eastwood High School. I am here to advocate for the complete support of Eastwood Cross Country/Track and Field coaches rather than to target and harass them. I would not be the person I am today without the team effort of the Eastwood High School Cross Country/Track and Field coaches. I am a person that has learned to manage and embrace life living with autism. The two sports of cross country and track taught me discipline and determination. Running gave me hope and purpose. This is the athletic culture I was blessed to grow up knowing and loving with Eastwood running teams. I have two younger siblings in the programs, and they speak of a different Eastwood athletic culture. There have been students who have said that they will quit running or leave Eastwood if their coaches are continually harassed and targeted, or the toxic culture continues with the current principal and football coach. They do not respect the best running programs in the city, multiple state championships, and numerous district titles. They have forgotten what my coaches have done for the entire Eastwood community. They have helped secure multiple race opportunities outside of El Paso and millions of dollars in scholarships. In my opinion, there needs to be a change in leadership at Eastwood High School, including athletics. Leave the most successful and beloved high school running program alone. Eastwood High School has the best cross country/track and field coaches. They have saved my life and many others that preceded me and will continue running with them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Rojas, EHS Speaker/Coach McLean.
Thank you, Board members, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I learned of the situation with Coach McLean yesterday. I was in San Antonio. I have two former, a niece, Amarilis, and my daughter, Carolina, that had attended Eastwood. Both were impacted by this coach in a very positive manner. I cannot fathom the amount of hard work and dedication that this coach taught both my niece and my daughter. One being a track runner and my daughter being part of a running team and also in his anatomy class. My heart goes out to this coach because he taught them the meaning of hard work, the meaning of dedication, the meaning of respect. That was taught. I did not hesitate when I arrived, and I was told this yesterday in San Antonio. They're both attending. One is attending St. Mary's and is a senior, and the other one's attending Our Lady of the Lake and is a junior. And they were, they wanted to be here, and they could not be here. So they asked me if I would come and speak on this person's character and the meaning and what they, how they were impacted. He is a wonderful person that deserves to be given an opportunity to see what has happened and why all of these allegations are being placed on him. And I have to say, I'm very grateful because he took my daughter, and when she was struggling in her anatomy class, and helped her to get through that class. And because of that class, she was able to speak and do a paper that awarded her a scholarship at Olu for $5,000 on top of what she already had. Today, she is a very good writer because she got the courage from this coach. She's the editor-in-chief at Olu. So I appreciate anything that the board can do to help the environment at Eastwood. As a former president of the tennis booster, and my daughter being the captain at the time, he taught my daughter to that discipline. She might have not have been a runner, but because of that class that he took with him, it gave her the character that she is today. Thank you.
Cynthia Morales-Caro, appreciation.
Good afternoon. I'm Cynthia Morales-Caro. I'm going to take one minute of my three to say thank you to all of you. Appreciate everything that you do as a public servant. I know that often what we do goes unnoticed, but not today. So thank you all for what you do as a board. I have two teenage daughters going to Eastwood High School. A little nervous when they were growing up, and I thought maybe I would put them in a public school, a private school instead, not knowing what would happen. And then my oldest daughter joined the cross country team, and I realized I have nothing to worry about. This cross country team did so much for my daughter. I am so appreciative of the team and the coaches. She's learned dedication. Her confidence level boosted when she joined the team. You're going to see by the end of the night that they really form a really strong family unit, and that also gave her a lot of confidence. Ambition. She doesn't give up. Courage. She is full of heart, full of courage, not afraid. These kids, and you see them, I know you do, running around all over Eastwood, sometimes twice a day. That dedication that they have. Compassion. They're fearless. They form a trust with each other. You'll see tonight that they show and create compassion. They're driven. They've learned to become independent, extreme, like, leadership skills, all of them. Determination. I didn't have anything to worry with my kids being at Eastwood. I'm so happy and proud that they are. I realized later on that it's just not my two kids. It's thousands of kids that these coaches have affected. Thousands. Okay? And we need to remember that. My fear dissolved when my kids went to the cross country team because they got everything that I didn't even know that they could provide. And they blossomed. They blossomed. So I'm very appreciative of the cross country team. They didn't just become physically strong, they became very resilient as well. At one point, my daughter got sick. She got hurt, her hip, from running, and she went to physical therapy. And when she started physical therapy, the physical therapist was like, "I ran with Coach McLean." And he's like, "Hey, she's an Eastwood runner." And she's telling the other therapists, and they're saying, "We're going to help you. This is somebody that you all should be..." This is somebody that you all should be proud of and that you should appreciate as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jonah Hurd, E H S Culture Administration.
Good evening. My name is Jonah Hurd. I'm currently a junior at Eastwood High School. I'm a two-year varsity letterman and a member of Eastwood's Law Enforcement Club. In the time that I've spent at Eastwood, I have truly seen why we are El Paso's finest, and I can confidently say it is because of the teachers and coaches who are willing to bend over backwards to accommodate to students. That is significantly more than people such as our principal could say. Although I wish I could thank the administration at Eastwood, all I have seen from them is a lack of support and an example of an authoritarian system. My attendance and passion to speak at this meeting was inspired by the injustice that I saw many of my teachers and my coach personally experience. It stems from the tears that were shed from one of my teachers after they were asked by our principal to remove a significant amount of resources from their room. The aimless act to have such a passionate teacher strip not only items from her class, but the symbolization of her character is a true reflection of where Eastwood's administration falls short. Upon trying to gain a better understanding, I personally risked possible repercussions and made the decision to seek answers myself. The responses I received were deflective. One answer that stuck out to me truly displayed the inability to take accountability. Our principal explained that our elected officials, yes, you, gave her specific directions that led to my teacher struggling to overcome such a painstaking endeavor. When I asked her why she did not feel the need to advocate on behalf of her community, she displayed what I understood as a dismissive tone. She stated that she needs to ebb and flow with certain things, and she did not want to give a precise decision. As a leader, dismissal of such an ardent teacher is a true reflection of our principal's attempts to minimize the creative characters that contribute to making Eastwood El Paso's finest. I have not taken for granted the time that you have given me to state my grievances. I hope this testimony can help contribute to invoking real change and encourages reflection on Eastwood's administration as a whole. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carissa Duarte, E H S Culture Administration.
Good evening. My name is Carissa Duarte. I'm the proud varsity cross country captain, member of the National Honor Society, and senior at Eastwood High School. Today, I'd like to shed light on the lack of support Eastwood's cross country and track team receives from our administration, more disappointingly from our principal. In the four years that I've been running under Eastwood's cross country program, our principal's attendance at our meets has been nothing short of disappointing, disappointing in the fact that her attendance has been consistent at other athletic events. Eastwood Cross Country is one of the most decorated programs, not just in the city, not just in the district, but in the state. Coach Michael McLean has earned the school numerous consecutive state-going titles and even developed the only two All-Americans El Paso's ever seen, Daniel Bernal and Aiden Torres. Aiden is a two-time national qualifier and first-time All-American, and yet there was still a minimal display of support from our administration as a whole. This was truly disappointing to see collectively as a team. Our 2024 boys varsity cross country team earned a second place at regionals and fourth place at state in the 168 region nonetheless. As confirmed by an Eastwood varsity football coach, it's no secret that Eastwood accepts transfers to remain above that 5A division in order to allow our sports to compete at the highest level. Despite this high standard, Eastwood's cross country program has been exceptionally up to par and successful due to the dedication of its athletes and coaching staff. Despite their outstanding performance, our varsity boys were met with lackluster support and no welcome home when they arrived home at the airport from state. As a varsity cross country captain, I've seen my teammates work with peer grit, practicing sunrise and after sunset every day, only to receive little to no recognition from Eastwood's administration, as opposed to Eastwood's teachers and students who wholeheartedly reflect a sense of community and support. In my personal experience, all my teachers have always taken the initiative to communicate about how the team is doing and even be present at meets due to the unspoken understanding that our administration won't. As a senior who's genuinely enjoyed and appreciated all my time spent at Eastwood High School, I can honestly say we're not El Paso's finest because of our administration. We're El Paso's finest because of the dedicated teachers and student body and the culture of peer support, recognition, and unity that has been developed by those two groups alone. Before I graduate from Eastwood High School, I would love to see this culture be continuously cultivated and not harmed as it's currently being. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker is Katherine Navidomiskas, E H S Culture Administration.
Good afternoon. My name is Katherine Navidomiskas, and I'm a junior at Eastwood High School. In all my three years going here, I have noticed one consistent thing that truly bothers me. My principal very clearly has favoritism for certain subjects, teachers, and sports. I have done both track and cross country and never have seen her at any of our meets. Our runners and high accomplishments are never acknowledged. We even had to have the practice meet moved to San Eli last year because of her. There was an ID system that was implemented earlier this school year as well, which seemed to further prove this favoritism. I happen to be a member of the band at my school as well, and an ID badge was issued to all the athletes and fine arts programs. When I received my badge for band, it was described as a token to be acknowledged and praised for our efforts and triumphs, and an excuse to be tardy if we are accompanying underclassmen or other people to their classes. However, when they presented it to my running sports, it was presented as a way to be punished if we were caught in the hallways after the bell rings and as a way to get our privilege of participating in our sport taken away. The favoritism can very easily shift to be seen as targeting the group she dislikes. Recently, one of my teachers, who also happens to be a coach, was put on leave for a false accusation. Only a few students in this class were interviewed and asked about the subjects except for the kids in the sports he coaches. I am truly concerned about this due process, which did not seem fair to me and my peers and should be reviewed by the board. I was so upset before Christmas break that I wrote to the Eastwood board member who told me I should go and tell as many people who have concerns and questions to go. As a consequence, my dad, who is also a coach at the teacher at Eastwood, at Eastwood, was intimidated by both the athletic director and the director of HR for circulating the advice of the board member headed. However, his actions were put forth as a parent who loves me and not an employee. My principal was upset that so many people were coming in defense for the teacher that was put on leave that I fear she's going to retaliate against the students and teachers alike who may be involved in these concerns. My dad has mentioned that admin has access to teacher grade books with their permission. I have a reason to fear that she may do something to my grades, change something here and there to affect my GPA. I am most definitely not comfortable with the fact that she has this kind of access to our grades and the lack of hesitation to use it against teachers. I feel I have every right to fear this. Because my dad is the department chair, the English department is also being unfairly attacked at my school. My English teacher was forced to remove her bookshelves from her class because they did not match the room. The class my teacher was given did not have the usually appointed bookshelves that the rest of the English department has, so she improvised and brought her own plain shelves to compensate. The way she was approached to ensure that she took these down was in a harsh enough manner to make her cry during class. This does not seem fair, as the estimated quote for the bookshelves for my teacher to buy for her classroom by herself was around one thousand two hundred dollars per shelf, which the salary that teachers would not make enough to cover these expenses. Please help the students and teachers at Eastwood High. They are working on eggshells to help with this hostile work environment. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Gustavo Martell, McLean.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I can see that I'm going to be grossly outnumbered here. My comments are not going to be very popular, as I can see from the comments that have been made in the past. But I've got a ten-year-old wound that I'd like to fix, and I owe this to my daughter, and I also owe this to all the individuals who can't come forth because of the fear of retaliation. That it's very easy to come and dish out platitudes of someone, but when you want to stand up to a bully and say the right things and confront them, that takes a little bit of courage. And I do give courage, I do say that those two girls who were actually the ones that are the ones that are being affected by Coach McLean right now are to be revered, and they are to be applauded for the courage that they have. But my wound, like I said, is over ten years old, and I wouldn't be standing here in front of all these people who obviously are not going to take liking to my comments. But like I said, I owe this to my daughter. She's got ten-year-old wounds. I met with board members, I met with vice principals, I met with principals, I met with athletic directors, I want to say Bobby Russell was one of the ones I met with as well. This individual harmed my daughter in ways that are irreparable. She still wears those wounds, and I will not, when I knew that this was going to happen and we're going to have a whole bunch of individuals talking on his behalf, I said, "How about the individuals that he's harmed? How about the individuals that he's harmed?" Because let me tell you something else. You know how I met this man? I met him when my daughter was at Eastwood Knowles, and he was trying to recruit her to come run at Eastwood, because we actually lived in the Hanks District area. Now, one of the things of importance is, the first thing that we actually were invited to was a meeting to support him eleven years ago, eleven years ago, because he had problems such as these. Then he had the problems with me and my daughter. Very vindictive, very unprofessional, very unethical, very deceptive, and very, more important than anything else, manipulative. This is what this man is. But the problem is that nobody stands up to it. They just allow the things to just roll in and roll out, and he just continues to practice. So now, ten years later, here we are still again, talking about another allegation. So it's allegation after allegation after allegation. This man has a proclivity to find problems. He has a proclivity to find problems, because this is not the first time, y'all. Read your notes, go back to your principals, identify. I have met with many of the people on the board, principals, vice principals, as well, Boatwright, I can't think of all the names. There was a Mr. Sanchez that used to be a parent and teacher advocate. I met with him, I met with the athletic director. This man has harmed so many kids, but you don't see him out here. Why? Because of the fear of retaliation. You don't see him here because they're afraid that, what are they going to do about it now? But they're all wearing those same scars. This man is not who they painted out to be, at least not in my eyes. And there's one thing worse than being a wolf in sheep's clothing, and that's being a wolf dressed as a shepherd. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mariana Yala, Eastwood Changes.
Good evening. I would like to start this with saying I am not a public speaker in any way, so thank you for letting me speak and listening. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mariana Yala. My daughter is currently a junior at Eastwood High School, and my husband is a teacher and a coach there too. We actually bought a house two blocks from Eastwood just so that we could put our kids in the best schools in the city. But I'm not here to talk about the past. I'm here to talk about the present and the future of Eastwood High School. I'm concerned about the state of affairs, not only at Eastwood, but within the district as a whole. Our elected officials, I hope you can help with representing all of the people of the district and not just a select few. My husband was contacted this past week by both the athletic director and the HR director who attempted to intimidate him for encouraging the concerned people to attend this board meeting. My husband, who has been a loyal district employee for the last twenty-six years, only acted as a father and a concerned resident of the Eastwood community. We're all concerned, though. It's not just him. My daughter was extremely upset recently that her English teacher was forced to remove bookshelves, bookshelves, from a classroom. I mean, these teachers have to buy their own supplies. She supplied bookshelves and was forced to remove it, saying that it was not in their handbook. But was it in the handbook? It didn't matter. The principal said that she had to remove them, so out they went, and she was crying in front of students. For what? Bookshelves. What kind of environment is that for children to learn? It's disgusting to me that that was even allowed or even encouraged by somebody higher up in administration. It's disgraceful. These people have to buy their own supplies, and now they're being forced to take down these supplies and crying on their way out? How can you let those people who take care of our kids do that? Like, I just don't understand how they're expected to perform well when they're crying because they're being forced to take out bookshelves? Sorry. Okay, to me, this all reflects a very unstable leadership. The fact that this teacher is forced to take out bookshelves, crying in front of students, my daughter's anatomy teacher is put on leave, to me, it is a poor reflection on the leadership of not only the district, but of the school. We moved from E P I S D just so that our kids could attend this wonderful district, the best district, and I haven't seen it. I'm actually a little disappointed in it. So I am encouraging the community members to speak out against this and to not worry about retaliation. I also encourage any parents or students here to request transcripts after this meeting. And I'm not saying that something is going to happen, but I don't put it past them. And I think that retaliation is on the agenda at Eastwood High School. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Aiden Torres, Eastwood Changes.
Good evening. I first want to thank you all for allowing me to speak here this evening. My name is Aiden Torres, and I am currently a senior and a four-year letterman at Eastwood High School. I've been a proud part of the Eastwood Cross Country and Track Program for the past four years. In those four years, I have made incomparable memories, but also have seen the obstacles that my team, coaches included, have had to overcome. Unfortunately, the most prominent trial that my peers and I have had to reap the consequences of is the lack of support from our administration. Our coaches are stretched thin and yet had to continue to put significant effort into building this program to the fullest extent, even when our administration falls short. This was brought to light during my junior year after a very successful cross country season, while I was ready to take track on with just as much grit. As our track season began, we hosted the first annual Winter Whirlwind Meet, a fundraiser for our Eastwood program. Our principal denied the coaches' request to host this meet unless they paid a hefty monetary price. To see this happen on the very campus that is supposed to support us was a frustrating example of how we have continuously lacked the resources available to many other sports in our community. My peers and I can only hope that action is taken that will allow Eastwood Track and Cross Country to continue to grow in a healthy manner. I would also like to talk about Coach McLean and who he is as a coach. I would proudly say he's the biggest role model in my life and has taken me, has made me who I am today. I was never recruited or intimidated by this man, but instead laid to greatness and inspired to be a part of the best track and cross country program in the city, led by him. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matt Barins, Eastwood Changes.
Hello, my name is Matthew Barins, class of 1996 from Eastwood High School. And I'm here today to talk about the necessary changes that need to be made at Eastwood High School. My wife has proudly taught at Eastwood High School since we moved back here in 2009. My wife is the English teacher who you have heard much about today. My wife had the unmitigated audacity to put up bookshelves in her classroom after the administration had moved her to a classroom that lacked bookshelves. Moreover, she decided to further go against standards of education by requiring her students to read each day and was then told that that was a waste of time, even though that waste of time was recommended in a book suggested by that administrator. And when she was told that she had to remove those books, and it broke her heart to have to remove those books, her hands were tied because the board had required it. And, well, fortunately, you are a public entity, subject to the Open Records Act. And unfortunately, the verisimilitude of that statement was belied by the documents that I received in that open records request, where it was shown that not only was the Eastwood High School faculty and staff handbook does not require that at the time, but nor did district policy. And as you heard from other students, the cost to the district that could be spent on better things is two thousand dollars, and the bookshelves in there now don't even match. And by the way, that was one of the reasons why she was told to remove those books, because it's more important that students... it's more important that students sit in a classroom where the walls and bookshelves match than actually read books. Wonderful leadership, I say. And so I respectfully request that you look into what is going on at Eastwood High School. This is not the school that I graduated from, nor is it the school that my wife initially taught at where she was supported. My wife was told to remove multiple items from her walls because they had nothing to do with education, yet when we reviewed all those items, they were specifically related to what she did. 90%, 5% was related to her duties as the Gay Straight Alliance sponsor for Eastwood, which, by the way, she has counseled numerous students throughout the years who nobody else pays attention to. This is the payment that my wife has received for her years of dedication. She broke down in tears because she wants kids to read. Thank you for your time and I wish that you do the right thing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey Senor, YTA.
Okay. Thank you to all your speakers. Oh, is that it?
Good evening, President Ochoa, Board of Trustees, Dr. Delatorre. My name's Jeff Senor. I am the president of the Athletic Teachers Association. We are 2,100 members strong in our association. I'm here to talk about support, okay? We are the best district in the region. There are a lot of accolades that we've acquired over the years. We just recently got an award, which Dr. Delatorre accepted down in Florida, for being the district that we are. In this district, we have people that work tirelessly, that go above and beyond the duty, spend countless hours outside of normal working hours, doing the work that needs to be done to support our students. And that's what we're here for. We're an educational institution and that's what we're looking to do. You ask any teacher, you ask any food service worker, any bus driver, any maintenance worker, anybody else that I've left out, you ask any administrator, okay? Because we do represent everybody from administrators, teachers, food service, custodial. We represent everybody. And being an elected official myself, I'm here to represent them. And again, what I'm getting at is, we need to support them. It's my job to support my members as a teacher association. It's also my job to support the district and what we're trying to do. It's my job to support the board, because the three of us all have to work together towards the common goal. What's the common goal? Our students and their success. And that's why we've been an A-rated district. That's why we have many accolades that I can go on about in this district. That's why, look at special population numbers, that's why we're the highest in the city. Other districts are sending their students, other parents want their students to come to us. I have spoken to many teachers who say that they've spent, and I'm talking about countless hours, 15 hours a week outside of their normal working hours, trying to get the job done. It seems that every year, we are asked, our teachers, our support staff are being asked to do more with less. That becomes harder and harder to do. That adds stress to our educators, that adds stress to our support staff. you all are elected officials, you are trustees, you are entrusted to hold the district to higher standards as our employees are. I ask you to do everything that you can to support our entire staff. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you all. At this time, I am suggesting we take a five-minute break and then proceed with our board meeting. We shall continue with now our board workshop. Dr. Delatorre, do you have any presentations this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the board, this evening, we have two presentations. The first presentation will be led by myself and Dr. Chacon, our chief academic officer, and it is setting the groundwork, the backdrop for two presentations that we've recently had, one with the ISLED Retired Teachers and the other was sharing this information with members of the Strategic Action Planning Committee around where we are academically in the district. So we have information about our current demographics, some trends that we are experiencing that I think you're aware of, but it's never, it's never a bad idea to remind our constituents, our community, what the circumstances are. And then we're going to go into some academic data from the 2023-24 school year. Throughout the presentation, if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt. We are at your disposal. And so the first thing that many of you know and that we've had many discussions around is the fact that since 2014, since I arrived in the district and during my tenure, we've gone from being a school district with 42,000 students to a school district with 34,000 students. These other numbers are slightly different in that they've grown in the ISLED Independent School District, but in the neighboring districts, they've gone the opposite direction because of all the residential development. the residential development that they have experienced. Whereas our socioeconomic level continues to climb and is currently at 85%. Socorro Independent School District, El Paso Independent School District have seen the number of students that are socioeconomically disadvantaged decrease and fall into the 70 percentile. The same can be said about English learners. When I arrived, we had one out of every five students were EL and then they became EB or emerging bilinguals. Now it's one out of every three students. And in the neighboring districts, their numbers continue to fall and now they're closer to one out of every five. And as was alluded to earlier, when you get a reputation for doing great work with students who have special needs, the special education community is a small community. The word gets out and we've seen our number climb from around 10% to now 15%. And I think the last number I saw was actually closer to 16%. Those students are coming from somewhere and that somewhere is primarily the Socorro Independent School District, where we've received a lot of transfers. Our operating budget reflects this decline in enrollment. We're down closer to $390 million in the operating budget. At one point, we were over $400 million. We have been, I think, very strategic in a couple of ways. The first is we are both fortunate and strategic that this board and our community supported a 2015 bond and a 2019 bond that has allowed us to right-size the district. One of the challenges we would have before us if we had not received that support is that we'd have almost 10,000 students less and they'd be in 65 schools instead of 49 schools. And so being able to go out and rebuild, modernize, and right-size the district has been a huge benefit for us financially. And the other thing is that the Human Resource Department, specifically Ms. Bobby Russell-Garcia and her team, have year after year reconciled the ledger. So as we've lost students, we've used positive attrition, retirements, resignations, relocations to reduce the number of full-time equivalents in the district, allowing us to always have alignment between our resources and the number of employees in the district. Because as you know, 85% of our revenue is dedicated to people, as it should be. We're a people business. And so that has allowed us to remain fiscally sound. At one time, we were fiscally very strong. Some of the things that have surfaced over the last couple of years have made it more and more difficult. But we are fiscally sound and certainly when compared to neighboring districts and some of the challenges that they are experiencing. One of the things that is interesting to me is that we've been in a pattern of decline in enrollment since 1987, but from 1994 to the pre-pandemic, about 25 years, we were typically losing an average of 280 students. Since the pandemic, we have consistently lost over 1,000 students a year. And we can't quite figure out the phenomenon because you would assume that those students are somewhere and that number exceeds any number that you would find in the charter schools or that you'd find in private schools. That number means that some of them either returned, possibly, to Mexico or used that opportunity to find work and started making money and decided to stay in that status. But again, going from the 62 campuses to the 49 campuses has helped us stave off any kind of financial catastrophe. There's the average 0.6% of our population over 25 years and then all of a sudden, 3.2% of our population just in the last five years. The last time that the Texas Education Agency and Governor Abbott applied his A to F accountability system, as you know, we were the only A-rated district in the region. That year, we had 24 A-rated campuses, 20 B-rated campuses. There hasn't been any official ratings since 2022. We do know that in 2023, we were likely an 89 and that this year, we would have likely been an 86. Now, one of the things that Dr. Chacon is going to explain to you is that as a result of all these districts filing a lawsuit against Commissioner Morath and the Texas Education Agency, there is this belief out there that he arbitrarily increased standards or relied on artificial intelligence to grade performance by students. So what you'll see is a statewide and a district-wide decline in performance. Before I get to that, let me just brag real quick. Congratulations, you were selected and received the 2025 District of Distinction Award back in December. It's a national award that recognizes the academic excellence that we have demonstrated in college, career, and military readiness. You know that you've been the number one school district in El Paso for the last four years in a row and you are the number one and have been the number one school district relative to college and career readiness for the last three years. So this is what I'm referring to. I'll turn it over to Dr. Chacon and she can run us through all of the academic data.
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board. Dr. Latorre, congratulations on Board Recognition Month. We appreciate everything that you do. So tonight, I am going to give you, I sent you a B.C. back in June about this data. It was preliminary and at that point, all the data was coming in across the state. Finally, a few months ago, they finalized the data. It takes a while to finalize. And as a state, what you can see is we had some drops across the board, specifically in math. So math took the biggest dips, reading some. EOC had the most gains across our students. So across the state, we did see, going back to what Dr. Latorre was alluding to, we did see a shift in academic performance in Texas. If you recall, we came back from the pandemic, the state came back very strong from the pandemic. And then this past year specifically is when we saw a big drop in performance across the state. That is also true across Region 19. So you can see again, the same trends, different subjects, obviously, that took the biggest dips, science and math. I talked about it briefly last board member, last board meeting in December when Mr. Hernandez and several of you asked questions regarding our performance of our EB students, specifically in math and science. But across the region and across the state, we did see a significant drop in academic performance, a drop that we, any ISletta, are not used to. Our teachers work very hard, back to the state of our district. I know that it's a curriculum, not a curriculum issue. However, like anyone else, we've peeled off at the onion. We want to make sure that we cover every layer, make sure that we are piercing and meeting the needs of our kids with our fart, which is our number one priority.
Can I say something really quick? I remember back when we recently, when we came back from the pandemic. And I just want to congratulate your foresight because one of our conversations that we did have was we might not see the immediate impact, but in year two and three, as we go move forward after everything, we will see the impacts. And that seems like you were right on that reflection.
And this is that I think we've forgotten, well, at least I have. COVID was an interesting time, I think, in everyone's life and we've kind of forgotten it. However, it's still lingering in the background. And what I mean by that is our students, our kinder students, for example, in the year 2020, 2021, they started kinder pre-K online. And those students are now, four years from now, are now either in second grade or third grade. The foundation that those students received, we did the best we could, but it was not the quality that early literacy, that numeracy needs in order to make sure they have the foundation to be able to apply that knowledge and skills as the curriculum does get harder every year. So yes, we've done well, but we do still see the lingering effects of our kids and being online and some schooled, some don't. I'll tell you a quick story. We still receive many students that, like Dr. Latorre said, where have they been? I don't know, but we're receiving them now. They're coming back, but they have not been in school. And so it's just this phenomenon of trying to figure out what happened after COVID. Nonetheless, we roll up our sleeves, we get after it and we make sure that we meet our needs where we need to. But that's the performance trends across the state and the Region 19.
And there's a little hyperbole, you know, in the conversation relative to the district. I mean, the district still is the only district in the city that has any comprehensive high school that has earned an A. And we happen to have, I believe, four or five comprehensive high schools that earned As. So to be able to say that there's not another comprehensive high school in the region that is an A high school and you've got Hanks, Bel Air, Eastwood, Parkland, is that it?
Eastwood, Parkland, I'm missing one, right? No, Eastwood, Hanks, Parkland, yeah, four.
So those four are As and then the rest are Bs, right? That's pretty remarkable because comprehensive high schools are hard to lead. If you look at the Texas Urban Council, something that I think we're proud of because I think a lot of people from these large cities, these metroplexes, just assume that they're going to outperform a city like El Paso, a border city. But if you look at the 11 schools that make up this council, and this council, it's got requirements. Socorro can't be in the council because it's missing one of the elements. And the element is that it be a large urban school district, that it be a school district with a large percentage of English learners or emerging bilinguals, that it be a large school district in declining enrollment. All these districts are in declining enrollment. And that'd be a large district with a high socioeconomically recessed or disadvantaged population. So we check the box on all of those things. And then you go to these meetings and they bring in these professional speakers and you start looking at how they performed on A to F. And again, this is just the recent year. This doesn't even include the year in 2022 when you had a lot more Ds and Cs in here. But the ISletta Independent School District and Brownsville are the only two that consistently perform at the A level and consistently outperform the region. And there's a reason for it and I think we all recognize that we're in a very unique situation. I call it the Petri dish because year in and year out, the children that arrive in the ISletta Independent School District, we know nine out of 10 are going to be Latino. We know that the primary language, if not English, is going to be Spanish. All of our teachers were at one time those same kids. And so we have this sort of captive audience, whereas if you are in Dallas, Houston, Fort Worth, you've got, last I heard, Dallas has 87 different languages, 42 different religions. They've got all kinds of political perspectives and we don't deal with a lot of that diversity. So it allows us to operate in a homogeneous environment. But it also allows us to be the authority on how to work with Latino kids whose primary language isn't English, who are poor and who we know better than anybody else. And that's why the Brownsville and the ISletta Independent School Districts have always performed very well. And I'll take it a step further. If you look at our performance, we are the red. You can see that when it comes to approaching grade level, the red is the ISletta Independent School District, the highest performing of all 11 in reading, math, science, and social studies. The next two would be the dark blue and the light blue that are next to each other. That's Brownsville and the one to the left of Brownsville is Austin ISD. Now, Austin ISD, you expect to be there because Austin ISD has some very wealthy onclaves in their district that can offset some of the poor performance. But after that, there isn't a lot of competition from Garland, Houston, Corpus, Dallas, Fort Worth, El Paso ISD. And that's true when we talk about meeting grade level. So what I shared with Creed recently is, look, eight out of 10 students in this school district are approaching the standard, or it means have passed by definition on the A to F accountability system. And we've made progress so that one out of almost every two students are meeting the standard, right? And when they start meeting the standard, you start seeing better outcomes when they go to colleges and universities when it comes to completion rates. So we're very proud of that. But again, with the exception of the social studies, where both Brownsville and Austin outperform ISletta, we're right there with them and we're right there with them in 2024, even with the information that Brenda shared. And that is that for whatever reason, most school districts across the state saw a significant decline in their performance. Regionally, Brenda?
So regionally, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I thought you had a question.
Yes, I did. Can you go back to the one showing the ratings? I understand the color code, but what is the gray?
I think it should be red.
Oh, okay.
Hector?
The colors are a little off, but I don't think they came through.
Okay, I just didn't understand what that gray flag was.
Dr. Chacon, regionally?
So regionally, this is just Region 19 data. So you just saw TUC data, this is Region 19 data. So again, we are the red. So you can see all subjects at the approaches level. And then you see our data at the meets level. Then this also, we shared this last night with our Strategic Action Plan Committee. Two populations that are near and dear to our hearts, right? First of all is our special education students. We're very proud of the outcomes of our special education students. The green means that we've outperformed and that's specific for only special ed students across the region. And so you can see the difference for all subjects, all tested grade and comparison to Socorro and El Paso. Our emergent bilinguals, another population that is dear to our hearts. Our EB students also outperform in most areas. We have some areas where we need to continue working and improving, but across the board specifically in our high schools, you do see that by the time they get through the model, which is, I remind you, we're a dual, one-way or two-way dual-language program. We start off in their native language, introduce the English, and then they continue that all the way through the high school. Our emergent bilingual students do very well. We also wanted to share with you, this is data that's not collected, I'm sorry.
Yes, before, can you go back to that chart? Again, it shows that seventh grade is the challenge.
Seventh grade math.
What have we planned or what have we already done to address that seventh grade challenge?
Seventh grade is, as you know, and it's one thing that I talk to you about probably every board meeting that we have. We are being more targeted in our coaching. That has really been a big model. In the athletic world, you're familiar with the coaching, especially talking to former coaches. They watch film, they coach day in and day out. That is something that, it's not new to our world, we do it. We are just more intentional and strategic around coaching and providing that support for our teachers. So specifically with seventh grade math, that is one thing that we've done is we have our assistant principals who are working with them or the principal. In many cases, the principals oversee the math, the lower grade levels, whether it's social studies or math. And we have developed what we call support plans for our teachers to provide them that immediate feedback. It's just in the coaching world, you don't provide an athlete the feedback on how to play on the next play. And you remember, you're not talking to an athletic person, so forgive me for not having the right language here. But before they go back on the field, they coach immediately. And that is something that we need to get better at in our schools, making sure that our principals, that are instructional coaches, that all of these people provide that support the teacher needs in order to change outcomes in our classrooms.
It's interesting that most of our schools now, middle schools, have sixth, seventh, and eighth. At sixth, it seems that they're doing fairly well. And they're still in the same school, but they're going to seventh grade and they find it challenging for that.
You forget what happens in seventh grade. It's puberty. It does play a role in the academic.
Is that true?
There is a lot going on in middle schools. Middle school is a very interesting age group. On top of all of that, that happens, the puberty, the social emotional, the transition from an elementary model to a middle school.
But also, it's not just us. I mean, it's across the state.
No.
And I'm just trying to, has any, you know, what have you heard? I know it has to do with age and whether it changes, but across the state, what has been the, you know, the analysis of and?
Yeah.
And suggestions that this is the stumbling block for seventh graders.
So I will tell you that at the last TUC meeting, we So I will tell you that at the last TUC meeting, we, the data how we started was with middle school data. We are, we all have the same issues, same concerns when it comes to middle school. I participated in a TA meeting that I'm a part of, and our next meeting is solely based on middle school. Because that is where, as a state, we all see drops. We need to get better at understanding how to reach that student. It is a very different student. And we need to get better at that. We also need to get better at helping our teachers become content experts. In high school, those teachers are content experts, right? In middle, in the K eight model, they're generalist, meaning that they're not the con, they can teach anything. But in, so in middle school, it's a very specific content. So you have to know math very, very well. You have to know science to that extreme. And seventh grade math, Charlie's smiling, is not an easy grade level. It is very challenging teaks. There's a lot of geometry in there. There's a lot of algebra. Believe it or not, it's one of the most challenging teaks for seventh grade math. And so it's, 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 it's a little bit of everything, but middle school is not easy. It's, it's something that we need to continue working on.
You see sixth graders, they're doing fairly well. Seventh becomes a stumbling block. Then eighth, they they kind of rebound on that one. So it's still middle school.
Yeah, it's still middle school.
So it's more specific, seventh grade.
Seventh grade is if you ask me.
And I could see that if you bring a child from a elementary school like we used to and put him in a middle school, that transition in itself was, you know, pretty challenging to a student. But they're in the same school, the same cultural environment, I think. And then they stumble at seventh, but then they regain their, they rebound on an eighth grade. So it's just, it's a phenomenon.
It's a very interesting group, the middle school. But we, it is one of our challenges and we continue working at it.
Okay.
Dr. Chacon, do, and this might be also for for Bobby. At the level you're speaking at, as far as support, do our middle schools have enough support systems in place for the coaching? Do we have enough staff is what I'm asking? And if not, what, how much of a budget item will that take to be able to make sure that we have that enough staff to support coaching on board?
Hi, thank you. I'm happy to answer. The middle school is adequately staffed. We, we strictly keep to our staffing ratios because we know how important middle school is for our adolescent children that are prepubescent, pubescent. Also, they have instructional coaches, just like our elementary campuses do as well. And I, an instructional technology teacher. And so they're, they're fully staffed, absolutely. They receive the same support as elementary and high.
So these are overall all the students. Do we break down it to gender or anything like that? Do we have numbers for them on that?
I don't have it with me, but we do. This is specific, and what you're looking at is specifically for EB students.
Well, yeah, but it's still.
And for all students. I don't have the data in front of me broken down by by gender.
I mean, it's just been, you know, I'm, I'm trying to make sense of this. So is it gender? Or is it across the board as well there?
Yeah. I, I don't have it broken down by gender with me right now. However, I mean, we have amazing data.
Oh, no, I know you have all that at hand.
We can definitely continue looking at it. But to tell you that this data hasn't been disaggregated one way out and everything else is, we look at it very closely.
Okay.
And she was about to get started, but I want to go back and thank you because about five, six years ago, before the state, during the legislative session, agreed to pay for pre-K for all, and more importantly, for universal pre-K full day. This board went ahead and made the investment. So we were actually out ahead of the state by, I believe, two, maybe three years where we just started saying, parent, it doesn't matter what you earn. Every child will be eligible. And what's even better is it will go from a half-day program to a full-day program. And then Dr. Chacon even raised the ante on that and decided that we would start entertaining three-year-olds, especially if they had special needs. You fast forward and then the state all of a sudden comes up with resources to help us with that. But initially, y'all voted and adopted a budget that let us spend money and not rely exclusively on being reimbursed by the state. Unfortunately, just as we were getting ready to see the new kindergarten, first grade, second grade student, because the idea is that a full-day pre-K, universal pre-K is going to provide the kindergarten teacher, the first-grade teacher with a better-prepared student. The idea was that by the time they got to third grade, third-grade teachers were going to be so impressed with how much better-prepared the child was than what they were accustomed to, that performance and outcomes would increase significantly. It just so happened, we had a pandemic and that first group of kids that we invested in went through a period of time where they were online and at home. Since that time, the department, Dr. Chacon's department, has introduced these assessments that give the students, the little ones, an assessment at the beginning of the year. And if you look at, for example, twenty twenty-one, only eighty percent of them were where they need to be. By the end of that year, that that number climbed eighty-six. But then look and see what happens as our teachers become more comfortable with the curriculum. In twenty-two, they start at seventy-seven. By the end of the year, ninety-four are at grade level, ninety-four point five. In twenty-three, that group came in at seventy-nine. At the end of the year, when they took their assessment for mathematics, they're at nine, almost ninety-six. And this last year, they came in at eighty-three and they're leaving at ninety-five. We're getting, we're getting better at getting, you know, a better student to the kindergarten. Same thing with English Language Arts. You have students come in in twenty twenty-four relative to phonetic awareness, and only sixty-five point four percent of them are where they need to be. And at the end of that year, that full-day universal pre-K for this four-year-old, nine out of ten are a better student for the kindergarten or the first-grade teacher that's about to receive them. Now, what we can't let happen, and the human condition is such that there's a tendency to say, this kid, this, this child already knows everything I was being prepared to teach him, I can become complacent and just sort of give them the same curriculum and the same experience. No, what we need you to do now is push the envelope. And if you need to creep into the first-grade curriculum, creep into the first-grade curriculum. So that's something that Dr. Chacon and her team really impress upon our teachers. I'm going to let her run with the college career, number one in the area. But again, in twenty twenty-one, you can see that we took a little bit of a hit.
Yeah, so you can see this is our Algebra One performance, which has recently been a little bit more of a topic of conversation in the region. And so I wanted to share with you our results from twenty eighteen all the way to twenty twenty-four. These are your eighth-grade students who take Algebra One. So these are that group of students that are in advanced math. And we've also increased our advanced numbers slowly but surely. But I know this has been in the news, and so I wanted to share your data with you. And then as well as our college and career readiness, this is the overall college and career readiness. So again, back on twenty seventeen, when the standard was born, all the way to twenty twenty-four. And recently, this is when, if you can take a look at it, for the class of twenty twenty-four, you do see those increases. College and career readiness was another one that COVID impacted tremendously. For example, as you know, you see here in the news, many students were not enrolling in post-secondary education, whether it's EPCC, a two-year, a four-year. The universities and colleges and trade schools are starting to see an increase as we are starting to see an increase again in our own internal assessments. So for example, students are not only taking, but successfully completing dual credit. Our associates has doubled. So we went from a four-point-three all the way to an eight-point-three of our early colleges awarding associates. That is an area of huge emphasis for us as we want to make sure that if a student does sign up for the early college experience, they need to graduate with their associates. That is something we're really pushing. TSI, as you may know it or remember it as the Accuplacer many years ago. That's how we all get placed into college and we find out which remediation classes. And TSI recently went through a change. It's now actually called TSI A or TSI two, whatever we want to call it. That is also a big, big push for us as EPCC no longer, they used to have certain waivers or exceptions in place for our students. So students, even though they didn't pass at Accuplacer, they didn't pass, they can access the dual-credit curriculum. Now, they, since the pandemic, they have removed those. So students do need to pass the TSI or an Accuplacer in order to access the college curriculum. SAT reading and math, that's one area where we saw an increase in reading. Math has been stagnant. We do have a lot less students taking SAT reading and math, given that most universities, again, as an effect of COVID, no longer require an SAT score. Specifically in Texas, they are going more with the TSI versus an SAT. So we do have a movement across the nation where SAT is debatable, depending on the college, it's no longer needed. So we have had less students wanting to take the SAT. So that is our data for the class that twenty twenty-four, the one that you just saw graduated. Remember, this data for the class of twenty twenty-four is not public. This is internal data. Reason being, graduation CCMR data always lags a year later.
Dr. Chacon, on the TSI, that's where we use our kids to go to early college too, right? So I'm seeing it at a thirty percent, but yet these kids take it at the middle school, right?
They start taking, so for an eighth-grade student who's interested in the early college, they start taking the reading in middle school, in eighth grade. So we, and then the summer, we have what's called our summer camps for early colleges. We do provide that summer school for all our, for all our early college students because we start providing them the prep they need in order to pass that assessment. So they can take dual-credit courses starting their freshman year.
So, so they don't take it at the middle school to be able to go into, like, say, Isleta, who has early college, to be accepted? Because they're, because obviously that's one of the recruitments that they want, right?
They get accepted, but we work, and if they pass it in eighth grade, great. But if not, we continue working it in the summer, all the way even their first semester of their freshman year.
And how long do they have to pass it?
They have all four years to pass it, but obviously, if they're in an early college, we accelerate that. That's why we bring them in the summer. And I will share with you that Mr. Cudiers, the one that's in charge of TSI and the increases across the board. We've had a very good, successful plan, I would say, with our TSI. Remember, this is a class of twenty twenty-four, so next year you'll see the class of twenty twenty-five. At this point in time, I would tell you that, I would say there's about a fifteen percent increase in both reading and math in comparison to this data. So we have emphasized our efforts on TSI tremendously. We use Mastery Prep as the prep company that we use to provide the intervention. It's a very different assessment. It's not an assessment that like they're used to when it comes to EOC or STAR, or it's not your typical assessment. And so I don't think that our students necessarily can't pass it. It's the familiarity that they have with that particular assessment. And it has a reading component and a writing component. The math, we don't test in eighth grade because in math, you need to have foundations of Algebra Two in order to be able to successfully pass it. So for math, we start testing freshmen, some freshmen, sophomore, junior, senior heavily. But all you need is to access dual-credit is at least to pass the reading and you can start accessing the Englishes, the Education thirteen hundred, psychology, all of those.
Thank you.
It's like layaway.
Yeah.
Dr. Chacon, can you go back to the previous, right there? Okay, so these percentages are for seniors?
These are the class of twenty-three and the class of twenty, these are all seniors, correct?
Okay. And we have twenty twenty-four, seventy-nine point five percent that are college-ready and fifty-two point three percent that are career-ready. So some students are classified as both college and career, or possibly even all three?
Correct.
What exactly makes somebody identified as college-ready?
So college-ready, there's several things. If they've taken a dual-credit course, that provides them, that's considered college-ready. If they successfully have passed TSI. If they have successfully passed an AP course and received a three or better, that also, if they've received an associate's degree. All of, an SAT also provides them college-ready. So all of, going back to this slide. So for dual-cred, for college-ready, it would be dual-credit, their associates, AP, TSI, SAT. Those are the indicators on the college side. On the career side, it's your IBC students. These are your CTE students, students that have completed a certificate, a certification in the many programs that we offer.
So for example, CAT math is at twelve point three percent for twenty twenty-four.
The class of twenty twenty-four.
For the class of twenty twenty-four. That twelve point three percent is what?
While we graduate, close to about three thousand students walk the stage.
No, but I mean, what's, what did they do to be?
They received an eleven hundred, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so it's an eleven hundred or higher?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yeah. Each of these assessments has their own, has their own rate, passing rate. So SAT is a national assessment, obviously, so we go by the national eleven hundred. TSI, I can't remember it off the top of my head, but that's the, that's the threshold and that's the bar where students have to reach in order to be college-ready. And then career is all of your industry-based certifications, which is what IBC stands for. So that's the several programs that all of you have in your schools and the Career Center. Right? So our PTEC is also included in those. Now, the PTEC is both a dual-credit and a trade industry program as well.
Real, real quick, oh, I'm sorry, were you done? Going back to Dr. Delatorre, I know you had said earlier how, if you go back to a couple of slides back where the red and the blue, red and blue slides, you had mentioned as the, the teachers, the, and maybe I heard this wrong, as the teachers get the curriculum going, the, forward a little bit? More. It was a little bit more. As, as the teachers learn the curriculum, the, the, the grades get better. What are we doing for our teachers to, to educate them, to help them get that curriculum down, to be able to help our students? What do we do for our teachers?
I'm trying to, are, are we talking about the, the pre-K students?
Yes.
So we've developed the curriculum. And what happens with teachers is when, when the curriculum is new, it's relatively new to them too. And what they're doing is they're doing a trial and error as they're working with the students. And they're finding out very quickly what's effective and what's not effective. And then when something's not effective, they have the, the latitude. And in our school district, because we are a PLC school district and we encourage collaboration by teachers, they share with one another what works, what doesn't work. So over the course of the year, I think they get better at knowing what's next. And they also get better in knowing that if it didn't go well now on this unit, I really can't move forward because past experience has told me that if they don't get this at a higher level, moving forward is just going to be another disappointment. So I need to go back and do it again. And so when you talk to teachers about scope and sequence, sometimes they feel like it's very prescriptive, like you're supposed to be teaching this element or this concept and it should take you seven days to teach it. Well, maybe in a perfect world, but depending on the kids in your class, you may find that after day five, they have it. There's nothing that requires a teacher to just go through the motion for two more days. They can go ahead and get to the next unit and jump in. Same thing conversely, if they get to day seven and two-thirds of the class is still struggling, they have the academic freedom to say, we're not getting it. I'm going to have to spend three more days on this, on this unit, because I know that if they don't get it, if they don't get this unit, moving forward is just going to set them up for failure. And then, of course, what they try to do is over the course of the year, when they know that they may have fallen behind in the scope and sequence, when they get to a unit where the kids seem to be grasping it, then they accelerate it to try and get back to a place where by the time they get to the end of the year, certainly by the time they get to the testing window, they've covered the material that they know is going to be tested. With pre-K, they're all very, very foundational, fundamental things that kids who are four-year-old, four-year-olds should know, like they should know their shapes, they should know their colors, they should know numerology, right? Phonics, that's the alphabet and the sound of the letters. So teachers can determine pretty quick at the beginning that some kids are not where they should be as a four-year-old. And they should also be able to determine and test where kids are either, where they need to be as a four-year-old. And they also can recognize right away who's coming from a household where they've gone beyond where a typical four-year-old is at. So it's a little bit more qualitative, I guess, because they're, they're, they're demonstrating a lot of what they know or or they're speaking, whereas it's less of this. And so a lot of it is the teacher's judgment too. And I'll turn it over to the expert, because I just made that whole thing up.
Sounding good.
It sounded good, right?
It's sounding really good.
I think it's perfect. No, we, we provide ongoing training for our teachers. We do PLC with them, obviously, that's one thing that we, we do a lot, just ongoing PD. You know, my, the team and I have learned that it's not a one-time attempt. Nobody learns things one-time. It's ongoing professional development, remembering that, that also remembering that when we have our teachers, it's, they're zoned in on this and many other things. So it's also, it's just a lot of, a little bit of everything, from PNCing to curriculum, to their own innovation, you know, currently in our district. They still have the autonomy to develop their lessons and do those things. We are not a scripted, a curriculum district, so we don't follow, we don't open a textbook and follow A through Z. Our teachers still have the autonomy. The resources that we use are resources, but no one says you have to be on page ten today in the textbook for science or mantra reading. The collaboration amongst them is encouraged and important. And most important, it's the professional development, but honestly, it comes back to time. The biggest, and I heard Mr. Jeff talk earlier about teachers' time, he's absolutely right. Time is a commodity, and we have to make sure that we provide them the time that they need so that they are able to do, take care of the things I need to take care of. Because in essence, it impacts our kids. So the more we can help our teachers, take care of our teachers, provide them the time and resources they need, guide them and support them, the better outcomes we can have.
And one of the things that, that I want to, and it's going to be a nice segue to Ms. Camber, is you as a board make an investment of four instructional coaches at every elementary school. No one else does that. So if you take four instructional coaches and the average salary is seventy-five thousand dollars, you're spending three hundred thousand dollars extra at every school to provide that support. You multiply the three hundred by the number of elementary schools that we have, and there is nine million dollars at your disposal that you could spend somewhere else, right? So when I talk to principals at elementary schools, I say, look, if those four people aren't making a difference, then we need to find a different place to spend those nine million dollars, because as you know, and we're about to talk deficit spending and things like that, you could simply take the nine million dollars and put it into the budget to have a balanced budget, and put those four teachers back in the classroom using attrition, and take the position that since those four teachers weren't, didn't seem to be providing some return on that investment, then let's get them back in the classroom and give us some time to figure out where better to spend the nine million dollars. I happen to think, and I think Dr. Chacon agrees with me, that that nine million dollar investment is exactly why that red line is higher than everybody else's. That's one thing they don't do that we do. The second thing that we do that the high schools in the area don't do, they don't have a six-eight. We currently have a six-eight, teachers teach six periods, they get a duty-free period, and then they get their PLC period. That's some like more than others, but that's when they get together, right? That, by the way, is a twelve million dollar investment. So if all teachers at the secondary level taught seven periods and got their one duty-free period, that would help me reduce the number of FTEs district-wide to the point where I'd pull back, claw back twelve million dollars. So now, think about it, nine million dollars available at the elementary schools, twelve million dollars available at the high school, that's twenty million dollars. We're no longer in deficit. Matter of fact, we have three, four extra million dollars. But then you can't have goals and targets like we have of being the best and making sure our kids get a great experience. All of a sudden, we're just like everybody else, and the performance will look like everybody else. Fortunately, we're the only district that currently is in a position to keep those resources in place, because if we had to introduce them now, we wouldn't have the money to introduce them now. And so back when we did it in two thousand fourteen, it was because they had them all here at the district office, all the instructional coaches, and a principal would call in, because it was very decentralized, and they'd say, we're struggling. And so what they'd do is they'd say, you, you, and you, deploy, mobilize. Go out to the elementary school, spend two days there with them, as if that's going to help them, two days, and then come back and we'll send you to another school the next day. And I've known forever that it doesn't work that way. I need them on the ground, boots on the ground, every day, watching the teachers and available to the teachers every single day. And I think that that's what's made the difference at the elementary school level. And at the high school level as much as they don't like PLCs every day. And by the way, they don't go to PLCs every day, typically three days a week. And then sometimes they're, you know, they do some other things. They learn to disaggregate data, they talk about their students, they talk about content area. I think those are the two things where we could recover the money and be, have a nice balanced budget, maybe even have two, three million dollars extra. But then we couldn't expect, I think, the outcomes that we've gotten for the last decade.
Not to mention not having the support and teachers then leaving.
Yeah, and they're still, I mean, teachers are already tired, I mean. Let me get to where we were at. I'm sorry, Brenda.
It's okay, sir.
I get going. I want to make sure we covered everything. So those are our littles, we talked about this, that. Okay, and during the twenty-three, twenty-four years, some things that you all, I think, should be very proud of. We opened the Career Center at Riverside High School. Not a week goes by that someone doesn't come, either from out of town or somewhere in the city, whether it's Creed or whether it's Sanelli or someone, to visit the Career Center. We opened the Bel Air High School Baseball Complex. We introduced PRISMs, and I'm hoping that here in the next month or so, we can have a really robust presentation on PRISMs, which is the virtual reality math-science experience that we have for our middle school and high school students. We successfully closed Mesa Vista Consolidated and Loma Terrace. Lindley and her team have done a phenomenal job of modernizing it. We have seven Purple Star designations that we can, we were, we earned, I guess is the word, in twenty-three, twenty-four in the Northeast. That means all of our Northeast schools have been determined to be very military-family, student-friendly.
I thought we had more than that. I thought we had more than that. We had the seven Purple Star designations.
Purple Star, yeah, there's been more since then, but in twenty-three, twenty-four, I think we had seven, right?
It was all the Northeast schools, for sure.
Huh?
Yeah.
It was all the Northeast schools?
Yes.
Since then, you're right, in twenty, last year for twenty-four, twenty-five, we added more.
Anx has won?
Yes, since, since.
Since twenty-three, twenty-four, was it twenty-three, twenty-four? I might be off.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, every year we've added more.
So we're up to eleven now?
I can't remember from the top of my head how many, but yes, every year we do. To your point, Mr. Hagerty, we do add more every year. And it's our intent to continue awarding our schools.
The residency program with UTEP has been great, and that's the one thing that Creed has done to help us, and that is they pay for our resident teachers so that they don't have to worry about having another job somewhere else. We did host the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four state gymnastic championships at the Bel Air Complex. You all remember that TAASB brought their leadership team out from all over Texas to visit our schools. They were down at Riverside. We presented as a district at the National School Board Association Conference in New Orleans. I don't ever say I earned the McDonald's Triunfador Award, the district earned that award. Named best district in El Paso for the third year, this year makes it the fourth year. And again, for the third year, highest performing in El Paso region for college, career, and military readiness. So we had a pretty good year in twenty-three, twenty-four. And there are others, but I just think we don't, and, and people say this, we, we don't talk about ourselves enough. We don't get it out there, and we need to do a better job of that. Here in the near future, we're going to introduce you to an AI investment that's going to speak directly to parent engagement, community engagement in real time. And the AI does it all for you automatically, and it, it presses the person on the other end by repeatedly asking them questions based on their answers till they get to, you know, what's at the root of your opinion, what's at the root of your perspective. And then the priorities this year and going into next year is to continue the residency program, continue PRISMs, and the AI program that we want to share with you, the new Career Center. We want to keep reinventing that so that the, the experiences that are available, the industry-based certifications are appropriate for the times. We've seen a significant growth. I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, I looked behind us, we were at the Laiverde Early College High School graduation, and eighteen kids stood up and said that they'd earned their associative arts degree in addition to their diploma. There were a hundred kids back there. And I said, we don't send you to the early college high school so you can get a diploma, and eighteen of you get an associative arts. The idea is that if we make the investment, as many, or as close to a hundred as possible, need to get an associative arts degree, because we pay a lot of money for those programs. And so this last couple of years, she's done a phenomenal job, she's in the sixties and seventies. And then, of course, things are going great, I'll leave it with that, with our strategic action planning process. We had a meeting last night. Dr. Chacon presented on early childhood ed, special ed, and the academic elements. And then Ms. Bobby Russell Garcia did a great job with culture, climate, and talked a little bit about how we engage our stakeholders throughout the district. So that's kind of where we are relative to sort of the, I guess, the context. And now what I'd like to do is talk about something a little more serious. As you can imagine, we're going to kick off a series of presentations on finances and the budget and the legislative session and things that are happening and things that we're hearing, some encouraging, some not so encouraging.
We have twelve Purple Star schools, Mr. Hagerty.
Ms. Lindley? Walk us through the, the parade of horribles. No, I'm just kidding.
We're not going to call it the parade of horribles, sir. Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, and Dr. Delatorre. So we do have your first budget presentation for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. We hope it culminates in adoption of a budget before June thirtieth, which is the statutory deadline for adoption of the next year's budget. You may think that this is the first opportunity to talk about it, but actually, we've been talking about budgets since October and November of the prior year. There are really seven key steps that we work through to align the district's mission, mission with our stated objectives and goals. The process should reflect a deliberate effort to mirror the needs of students with the limited resources we get from the state, from the feds, and from our local property owners. The final budget ought to reflect the district's commitment to supporting educational needs of students while still remaining fiscally responsible. So as I mentioned, planning has already been ongoing. We started in October and November looking at staffing ratios. In December, we actually met with all of the campus administrators, talked about the rollover from grade to grade, what we expected the staffing needs to look like at each campus. And we will now be working on district-wide and departmental allocations. By probably April, we will bring you a budget to look at that we would recommend to you. But keep in mind, as Dr. Delatorre and Dr. Chacon mentioned, we have a legislative session underway, and it started this week, so we expect, I don't want to say chaos, but we expect some changes and for it to be difficult to follow. In June, we expect to adopt the budget, maybe in May, but generally in a legislative year, it's, it gets delayed until the June thirtieth deadline or the June meeting. In July, you will receive certified values from El Paso Central Appraisal District. And in August, you would adopt the tax rate. July first is when the budget actually becomes effective. We are usually closed that week, so when we come back, we actually have the implementation and the execution of the beginning budget. All year long, we monitor what's happening, are we staying within the budget? Do we have any extraordinary expenses? Are there any things that we need to adjust for? And we're always evaluating what's going on in academics, what's going on in athletics and fine arts, in HR. Where do we need to make adjustments? What do we need to do to ensure we meet the district's goals and objectives? So as I mentioned, budget development is ongoing behind the scenes. We will have a budget workshop or a budget presentation, and then the Opportunity Board Discussion every month from now until when we intend to adopt in June. The budget development, you can see, obviously starts out with revenue projections, staffing development guidelines, and those meetings with principals, so that as they're developing master schedules, they have an idea of what does their student population look like, where's the student demand for courses, where do we need to focus for CTE, where are our special education needs, those kinds of things. In March and April, we'll get the first valuations from El Paso Central Appraisal District on April twenty-fifth. They deliver preliminary values, and we will use those to update projections, to look at local revenues, and to compare it to what we expect to receive from the state. Obviously, there is some, yes, ma'am, let me finish my thought. There is still discussion at the federal level about what our funding will look like, but I'll show you in just a moment how much of our funding comes from the feds and what impact it has on our general fund budget. Yes, ma'am?
And I must admit, you know, I have ADD, so I, I'm listening and skipping way off. That's probably the question, the answer's probably within your presentation. But as we prepare for this, is there a way to get like a dashboard of information as far as? I, I know year-round, you all work really hard, and we talk about when, when we're, when teachers leave the district, how we do the positive attrition and things like that. But can we highlight some of the things as a district that you all are doing to reflect those type of budget savings and how we're doing that so that we can present that and understand that and the public can as well?
Yes, ma'am, and we'll talk a little bit more about some things and allude to that, but we won't go into great detail. I can tell you that Ms. Russell Garcia gave an excellent answer to a question that came from the Strategic Action Planning Committee last night about, how are we going to ensure we don't have a teacher shortage? How are we going to protect our budget and our finances? And she was absolutely on target when she said, it's never in the classroom. It happens in administration, it happens when we have people in central office leave. We evaluate every single position, can someone else assume those duties? Can we consolidate two or more positions and not fill that one? So first, we take care of campuses, then we look to administration for changes and consolidation of positions. I will tell you that transportation, custodial, our operation staff are frequently asked to tighten your belts, see what you can do and where you can absorb those duties with ongoing staff or with existing staff. Then in July, as I mentioned, you'll receive your final certified property values, and in August, we'll be back with the proposed tax rate for your consideration. Adoption of the budget and adoption of the tax rate both require a public hearing, and an opportunity is given to the public to express their opinions and any concerns or questions they may have at that time. As we've already discussed, we are under a strategic action plan that will end effective June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. So when I talk about goals today, I'm talking about the goals that are in existence, not those that are being developed by the community. It's very exciting to see a community group come together of over a hundred people. And so when we talk about that plan, it's not us, we're providing information to them, but they are really the ones doing the work and developing the plan. Under our current strategic action plan, board, board goal number one is about our future, about our students, about our kids. And our goal is really to graduate them ready for college, the military, or a career of their choice today, as it exists under those goals. Board goal number two is all about our people. And we want not only to recruit and retain the best qualified employees, but we want to provide an environment that supports them physically, performed under each of these goals, I think, on the goals that the board adopts and what their community and constituents bring to them. So meetings one through three have already occurred, meeting three was last night. Meeting four and five will be in February and March. And then we expect for the community to come before you and deliver to you what they recommend as your strategic action plan for approval by the board on April sixteenth. Still with plenty of time to inform the budget process. We're also hearing from them as we go through these strategic action items. As you can well imagine, safety and security is a high priority for you, and they are mentioning it as well. So even though it's not specifically referenced in, in any one of those goals individually, it was referred to in goal number three, and it's an ongoing concern that we already know about and are incorporating in our budget discussions. When we look at the adopted budget as of today, you can see that in the general fund, there's a highlighted row for use of fund balance. So even though it looks like revenues and expenditures are balanced, and they are, four hundred and eight point one million in the general fund, we're using seventeen point two million of fund balance. And I fully foresee that we will use every dime of that. In child nutrition, we are planning to use a million and a half of savings that we had on hand to support expenditures in that budget or in that fund of twenty-six point three million. And then in debt service, keep in mind, this is always voter-approved debt. And so we have the authority. And so we have the authority to levy a tax rate sufficient to support those debt payments. And we will levy that amount through the tax rate to support forty-nine point nine million in debt service payments in this current year. Do you have a question for me, sir?
Yes. Lindley, can you remind me two things? One, the seventeen point two in the general fund. If you recall, the reason that we opted for a stipend is because we don't have to come up with some of that or all of that for the following year. How much of that is stipend and how much of that is just deficit?
So I would say about three and a half million of it is stipend.
Okay.
One time, not recurring, not on the salary schedule, so we're not bound to it contractually.
So that means that even now, for next year, to remain in a balanced budget, we have to come up with fourteen million dollars?
Yes.
Or cut fourteen million dollars worth of expenditures?
Yes, sir.
Which is what we've been trying to do during the year, but fourteen million dollars is a lot to cut.
Yes, sir, it is. And keep in mind that we adopted a deficit last year of five point seven million. So for the last two years, we have used fund balance. And I foresee we're going to continue to in a pretty significant amount of fund balance. And keep in mind, fund balance really refers to what are my current assets minus my current liabilities? So if I paid all my current bills, what do I have left over? And how long can I operate on that? Okay? All right. Yes, ma'am?
With that, we haven't, correct me if I'm wrong, but we haven't, to this date, while we have dipped into our fund balance, we still have plenty of or a decent amount of space in case we cannot operate, in case there's an emergency and we need those funds for operation.
So I estimate right now, we have fifty-eight days of coverage for this year's operating budget. We like to be above sixty. And in fact, that is one of the objectives in the superintendent's evaluation is, do we have sixty days of unassigned fund balance? And we're slightly below that.
One more quick question or
Yes, ma'am.
contribution. As I would like to see, as we get into the budget process too, this is extremely important and it's very broad. And I'm not necessarily asking to see where each and every penny goes. But I would like to see the brick and mortar spending because we do invest in capital improvements, be it small projects each year. But I would like to see what that budget looks like and for the district as a whole, and then broken down by learning community, if that's okay?
Yes, ma'am. I will tell you that our brick and mortar spending is done. It was 2015 and 2019 bond. Now we're in maintenance mode. So very little of it goes to now refurbishing, rehabilitating, renovating. It's done. And you'll see, well, in fact, on this slide, we'll talk a little bit about it. So you can see, this is fund balance. The two combinations here, the dark gray is unassigned fund balance. The lighter gray is assigned fund balance. And keep in mind, assigned just means that it's assigned for a specific purpose. And usually, it's purchase orders or obligations that cross over the end of the fiscal year. So we've authorized it. We know we're going to spend it, but either the good wasn't delivered, the goods weren't delivered, or we haven't finished the particular project, and so we've got to pay for it next year. That's assigned fund balance. But they're both pretty liquid forms of it, if you will. So in twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, our total assigned and unassigned fund balance was almost a hundred and four million. As you may recall, last year, I talked to you about the fact that there was twenty-three of that. Twenty-three million was assigned for construction that was going to have to be spent. And you can see that light gray decreased by a little more than twenty-three, but pretty close to twenty-three million where we finished construction by the end of fiscal year twenty-four. The unassigned fund balance only came down by eight hundred thousand, but that's what we're spending today to support that deficit in the budget we adopted.
So broken down then by maintenance. And do we, each year, what has been an average, let's say, in the past two years that are, that is not related to the bond, but that is maintenance spending for facilities?
I don't have the breakdown in front of me. I see Belin and Jessica. Jessica, will you get me an answer and bring it up here in just a second? Tell me what function eleven has been? I'm guessing. Okay. But bring it to me, okay? And I'll get you an answer in just a moment because they've got computers out back there. But I don't have it off the top of my head, and I didn't go into that granular level of detail here. All right. So did you have a question, Mr. Haggerty?
Also hoping to add to that list, maybe the software titles that we license and that we pay subscriptions for? Because I know just looking at Microsoft Office and the email that we use.
And Google and the suite, yes, those are very expensive.
Just Microsoft is probably about one point four a year, one point four million. But we've got an amazing IT team, and maybe we can give them a stipend or something. And I know they can come up with something different. As far as the, my school bucks, I don't remember how much money we pay to fund Tim's account. But what if our IT team wrote their own? And then we get that money. We can still offer it at a discount, but still be getting dollars that we're giving to somebody else.
So tonight, I'm talking more about context, big picture. We're going to bring to you those details, and maybe it's better because you're both asking me for specific details in departments on contracts, on subscriptions, on maintenance and operations. Let me bring that to you next time. So ladies, don't dig right now. Let me get it to you because it's too granular for what we're talking about today. Yes, do I know? And do we have those numbers? We absolutely do. But I'm trying to give you the big picture today and kind of walk you through what the process is going to look like over the next few months. We're going to get into those very detailed discussions.
Thank you.
Yes. Sorry. Is that it? Okay. So when we talk about funding sources for the general fund, we talked a little bit about the fact that the federal level of funding is somewhat uncertain. That represents two percent of our revenue. So we get about eight million dollars in the general fund from the feds, two percent of our overall total revenue in the general fund. Eighteen, almost eighteen and a half percent is supported by our local property tax revenues, or seventy-two million. And then the state funds three hundred and eleven million dollars, or eighty percent of our budget comes from Austin and from other districts around the state who are directed to redistribute those revenues. Local sources, there's two components when we talk about how do we get local property tax revenues? First comes property values. And as I already mentioned, April, we'll get preliminary. July twenty-fifth, we get certified values. There's an inverse relationship between property tax revenues and state foundation payments. So we get a fixed amount per kid, right? If the local property tax goes up, then the cup doesn't need as much from the state to fill the glass and vice versa. If we get less property tax revenue, then we're going to get more from the state to ensure we're fully funded for each child. Those payments from the state are based on current property values, and they're called foundation payments. So you'll hear those words used interchangeably. This is just a graphical representation of property values for the last ten years. And you can see that they have modestly increased every year. And when we talk about this, this is taxable value. And the reason I want to point that out is because in twenty-three, twenty-four, you can see that's the only year we took a dip in property values. Well, that's because they raised the homestead exemption from forty thousand to a hundred thousand, which gave us less taxable value at the local level. And then this is a reflection, I think, of how well you manage your tax rate and how sensitive you are to your constituents and the demands on their livelihoods. So we have a 2015 bond issuance, a 2019 bond issuance. You can see that immediately following both of those, your property or your tax rate slightly increased. However, as you paid down debt after the 2015 issuance, your bond, your total tax rate decreased from one point seven five to one point three five. Then we went out for the 2019 bond, and again, we sold debt. The maximum we went up to was one point five two seven, and we've now come down to one point two three one five. In the gray box or the gray part of the graph, that's the M and O part of the tax rate, and it's really driven by the state. And they forced us to compress that. So between what you've done on your debt rate and what they've done on the M and O rate, those collectively have allowed us to reduce the rate from one point five two seven in 21, 22 to one point two three one five. So property values increased, and y'all were able to lower the tax rate in order to still maintain the same level of revenue, but reduce the burden on your taxpayer. So we talked a little bit about the state sources of revenue. Keep in mind, again, they provide eighty percent of the revenue that comes to our district. There's tier one and tier two. Tier one is basic allotment, basic programs. And you can see there's special ed, dyslexia, all those allotments come in that tier one level of funding. The enrichment level of funding is tier two, and that's based on weighted average daily attendance. Then we also receive facilities funding. I call it IFA and EDA. Those are related to instructional facilities allotment. It goes to support our debt, and that, we get about three million a year. And then on existing debt allotment, we get about thirteen point two million. Again, that goes to support the debt service. It doesn't come to the general fund for offsetting operating expenses. And we, I was actually pleased to see this. Our averages are slightly different, but you can see pre-pandemic, we were losing, we budgeted and lost about an average of three hundred and sixty-nine students per year. We budgeted for a loss of five hundred. Post-pandemic, we were still budgeting for a loss of five hundred until the last two years, when we realized, no, our average post-pandemic is a loss of about twelve hundred and fifty students per year. So Ms. Russell Garcia's team has really had to adjust to that decline in enrollment. And then on the flip side of that, we get more money if our ADA goes up, right? So if our average daily attendance increases, even though we're losing enrollment, we can still preserve some of that revenue. Dr. Chacon has done a great job with her Attendance Task Force and a lot of the other people in this room about encouraging attendance and ensuring that our kiddos get to school because that also positively impacts our revenue streams. But if you look at total enrollment, ten years ago, we were at forty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-six. Today, we're at thirty, or we project thirty-two thousand next year. And our ADA was thirty-eight thousand, and now it's thirty thousand. So that's a dramatic impact on our budget. Yes, ma'am?
And I know this also might be self-explanatory, but can you just give a brief, brief explanation how positive enrollment affects the revenue streams? What can you do when we have that increase in revenue? What does that look like?
Well, right now, it offsets the deficit.
But what does it look like? Is we keep
So ADA, I believe it was, was it three million a point? Three million a point for every percentage increase in attendance. Dr. Chacon will know this better than I. But as I recall, we were ninety-four, ninety-five percent pre-pandemic and dropped to ninety-two post-pandemic. Now we're back to ninety, we were doing great before cold weather hit. That threw a monkey wrench into it, but what were we last, before last week's snowy weather?
Before, we were right at the cusp of ninety-five. And so that is significant.
That's a huge increase, impact to the budget when students are in school. Yes, ma'am? Did that do it? Yes, okay. All right. So looking ahead to the legislative session, it began this week or it's in session this week. There are four things that we know they know about and are listening to us. We've heard them discussing, and we've heard other school districts talk about it. There hasn't been an adjustment to the basic allotment, which is six thousand one hundred and sixty dollars in six years. On the flip side of that, inflation is greater than twenty percent for that same period. So asking us to perform greater services, asking teachers to do more with the same level of funding that we received six years ago is virtually impossible. I mean, to be frank, it is. You can't, you can't do what they're asking us to do on that same level of funding. We know they are already discussing changes to CTE, to SPED allotments. I feel fairly certain we'll see those. I also think we may see a change in the school safety allotment there. Those are essentially unfunded mandates that have been handed down by the state for the fencing, and it all has to be done by August of twenty-five. So we're spending our money, of which there's very limited, and we didn't receive as much as our peer districts did, to accomplish the same things. Currently, we get ten dollars per ADA per student and fifteen thousand per campus. I can spend fifteen thousand on the chain link fence around one campus, so it's just not sufficient. And then we're blessed. Ms. Russell Garcia's team does a phenomenal job. We don't have a teacher shortage, but across the state, TEA recognizes there is one. They have a teacher vacancy task force. And of course, they recommend increasing teacher salaries to attract and retain. We are top three highest-paying districts, and the ones that are higher are very small and way out east. And so we do a great job with this, and we don't have a teacher shortage. We don't have teacher vacancies that we are unable to fill. And then, of course, the voucher program. So that's the big one. I personally believe until that's passed, you're not going to see any reform to the other categories of funding. And I think that's probably a consensus among most people that are watching the legislative sessions. And then finally, I don't know if you're aware of the total amount. I know we've talked about it because we were required to bring you ESER information. But post-pandemic, to mitigate learning loss, to recover from the learning loss children experienced and to deal with the expenses of bringing school back and putting up dividers and buying hand sanitizer and masks and tests and all those things, we received two hundred and sixteen million. That's essentially what's helped us not deficit spend, but it's gone. We had to spend the last grant in total by September thirtieth of 2024. So two hundred and sixteen million has filled gaps in our budget caused by the twenty percent inflation and caused by the lack of funding from the state, but we no longer have it. And so this is going to be something that you have to consider as we go forward. And that's the end of today's presentation. Are there any other questions I can address?
Yes, Ms. Lindley, thank you for that presentation. Thank you, Trustee Luceto, for your questions and the points you made. You as well, Trustee Haggerty. I look forward to having that discussion and seeing those details in the next meeting. I'll try to keep this conversation for my comments, big picture. And I certainly don't need all the answers now, but I just want to be clear on what we're working towards. It sounds like the magic number is fourteen million dollars that either to have a balanced budget, we need to find the revenue or cut expenditures?
So what Dr. De La Torre was referring to is the entire deficit for this year is seventeen. And we've already spent that stipend. It went out at Christmas. So the seventeen has to be made up.
So you would say that the magic number is seventeen million dollars? Either find the revenue, make the cuts, or find a mixture of both? Okay. If we are not able to find any additional revenue and we do not make any cuts, what state will the fund balance be in?
Well, we were at sixty-two unassigned. Let's go back here. Sixty-one point six two unassigned. So take eighteen off of that, you'll be at forty-three.
How many days is that approximately? It's going to be less, I mean.
Well, I think we're around fifty-eight right now, and that's at sixty-one fifty-eight. I don't know if I can do that math, and I had fifty-eight days with sixty-one. No, I can't. I don't have
That's okay. Maybe we can get that in the next meeting.
In fact, we may be at the policy limit because I believe the policy says when you get to less than a certain percentage, you have to take action.
Recently, a neighboring district had to borrow money to make payroll. Is the Sleda District in any danger of being there?
We do not have to borrow money to make payroll now. If there's no relief, April or May, you might need a short-term loan to make payment.
This April or May?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Another thing, so we were talking about possible reallocation of funds. One example that was given in the previous workshop was that there's four instructional
Coaches?
Coaches at every campus. That's nine million dollars that we could possibly save. But I agree with Dr. De La Torre. It seems very likely that we take a hit in our performance. I'm wondering, I don't need an answer to this now, but maybe just some thought between now and the next meeting, is maybe some campuses only need two? Maybe some campuses don't need any? Maybe we're not going to save a full nine million? But maybe we can do a very honest assessment and start chipping away at items like this. I don't think it needs to be an all or nothing. It's a discussion I look forward to, possibilities. The other thing I'm curious about is, okay, revenue. There's a lot happening at the state that may or may not work in our favor, right? Is there any, you know, of course, besides raising local taxes or traditional state funding that we're hoping to get? Again, I don't need an answer on this right now. I don't need an answer on this right now, but I'm wondering if there's something, I think Trustee Hagerty was alluding to this, we can be creative in finding other revenue sources or discuss what other options are there? What do we have to do? How can we, as a board in a district, be active in finding more revenue? I really hope the teacher unions that are associated with the district could be very vocal and honest about, you know, what they're seeing in their classroom, if there's any cuts that can be made there. Obviously, we're not looking for cuts in salary or anything like that. That's not what I'm suggesting. But I have heard, you know, in informal conversations that maybe we don't need to be spending the money on this, or why are we doing this, or, you know. I hope we can have open and honest conversations about that, just to explore it. And, you know, maybe we don't get the full 17 million balance, but I certainly hope we can come very close. So I'll be requesting one-on-one meetings with you, Ms. Lindley.
Of course.
Throughout this process. So hopefully at the next meeting, I can, you know, talk about these things, suggest some of these things and find ways. I also encourage, you know, the teacher unions, or even if you're not part of a teacher union, you know, reach out, just share your opinion, just share some thoughts. I really think we need a brainstorm, and I really think it'd be a great news story that we were actually able to do it without, you know, cutting teacher salaries, or, you know, not having enough teachers, or decreasing the, you know, the impact that we're able to make because of the funding that is available, like instructional coaches that have obviously had a high impact. So those are my thoughts. I thank you, Ms. Lindley, for this presentation. I thank you for the conversations we'll be having between now and the approval of the budget, and look forward to working with my colleagues on this.
My pleasure.
Yes.
Since you mentioned times might get a little tough, starting in March or April, would you recommend, would you recommend we meet a little bit earlier than next board meeting? Maybe have some workshops in between where we can get the information and we can start working towards making a decision that will best help the district?
I don't think it's necessary to meet before the next board meeting. I think that we will have a good sense of what's going to happen and whether there would be a need. I really foresee, if there were any need, it would be a nominal amount. And here's part of the dilemma. We don't get foundation payments. We don't get any money from the state in April. That's why I say, April or May might be tough. We might be a little bit short in cash to meet 30 million in payroll. But it's not, it's not like I can't meet payroll. It's, if the whole thing is 30, I might need seven to give us cushion. But that would be May. So-
You're saying a bridge loan. It's more of a bridge loan?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I mean, this is not over-approved debt by any means. This would be a commercial loan, short-term, that I would anticipate paying back in September because April and August, we get no money from the state, right? And yet, that's when our budget year starts. And if the state does approve reforms in spending, we may not see it till September because that's the beginning of the fiscal year. So it puts us in a bind because we don't know what they're going to do. I think we can get by without it. But I'd rather you hear from me, there's a chance. And I will tell you, across the state, people aren't sleeping, like me are not sleeping because we're worried about, oh, my gosh, they haven't done anything in the last two legislative sessions and in over six years with 20% inflation. That makes me not sleep.
Okay, just to piggyback on Mr. Hernandez, he is discussing things we can do internally, and I'm all for that, but we can also see if there's something we can do externally.
Absolutely.
Getting in touch with our state representatives, our senator, and see what we can do to meet with them and push them and let them, you know, let them understand, let them know the difficult situation, not only our district, but the majority of districts across the state. If anybody knows, representatives from other areas of Texas, whether it's Austin, Houston, Dallas, you know, reach out to them. The public education school system in the state of Texas, we need help. And I'm not just speaking for our district, the Sleda district, but as everybody knows, there's, this is a major issue throughout the entire state. Thank you.
Last thing, it's extremely disconcerting that because of where the state has left school districts in Texas and the attack on the public school system, that we are left in survival mode to make decisions that will affect children's, children for many generations to come. And survival mode is cutting what is important to be successful in the classroom for both teachers and students. So I want to piggyback on what Trustee Dwyer said, and thank you for your comments too, just to do it on this. But we need to, if we can, take some of the fight to Austin and make sure that our voices are heard as well through the unions. That I would like to see that kind of us work together on that and have some joint voices. And I hope to see our team here, Dr. La Torre testifying in Austin, making sure that through, with that data that you presented, this is the difference that was made. We could cut these 9 million, but this is how it will look like in two years, three years, four years. And will these students get to college with the foundation that they have now? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Trustee Dwyer. I agree 100%. I said as much at the last time we were discussing the previous budget, that that is exactly what we need to do. I hope as a district, we're able to be, I think we should be very open and public about what's happening at the state, how that's affecting us. And a lot of it is out of our hands as a board. But Trustee Dwyer is right. We can be advocates. You know, many of us do have personal relationships with our state representatives, and through that, a greater network throughout Texas. And that is a campaign I do want to be involved with. I think it needs to be a collaborative effort of, of not giving a pass to our state legislators when it feels like they're just putting it on us, like they're passing the buck to us. And while your school board didn't approve this, or your school board didn't approve that, when they know that they're holding the majority of funds that can give teachers better paying salaries and give our students a better learning experience. So thank you, Trustee Dwyer, for bringing that.
And I failed to mention, but Ms. DiMonte watches carefully what's happening every day and gives us updates. So I'm sure she's more than happy to provide those through Dr. De La Torre to assist you in how you can advocate.
Real quick, excuse my ignorance, but can we get our state representatives to come to our next budget meeting that we have? Can we send a formal invite to them to have them sit here and watch what we're doing? I don't know if they'd pick us up on it. You know, because everybody here that's been speaking from, all my, all my colleagues here have brought up some great, great ideas. And, you know, it'd be great to have them there and looking at exactly what we're talking about in our, where we're suffering in our, in our situation. I don't know if we can, can do that. And exactly, they can present on something that they're working on.
And maybe they can give us an update. So certainly, I've got a note, and I know Ms. Monica does too.
Thank you.
A lot of them are probably already in Austin getting ready for the session. But one of the things that Priscilla and I will work on is making appointments with them when we go to mid-winter at the end of this month. We'll be in Austin for about three days, and we'll see if they can either meet us for lunch or entertain us in one of their offices and sort of share. And they're pretty, they're aware of it. Diane and I and all of us have, have really shared our concerns. More than likely, we're going to get something. What used to be, you know, 6 billion to education now sounds like it's between 4 and 5 billion. What's changed? Well, we're competing with the power grid that they want to invest a lot of money in, and we're competing with his zealous and enthusiastic need to support the border security attitude that has landed at the White House. He wants to be a big part of that. And then the third is, he's always about reducing taxes. And so those are the three, I think, buckets that we're competing against. But we're looking at some relief. I think, as Lindley said, it certainly won't be in time to address the payroll issue. The payroll issue is simply a timing issue. It's not a, you know, it's not a, something that we have to dig our way out of. It's just a timing issue that in the past, we'd have enough cash, for lack of a better word, to not have to rely on the dispersment from the state. But I'll see if I can make some phone calls to Senator Blanco, to Mr. Moody, Mary's, pretty vocal. Who am I missing? Claudia Vence, yeah. Since we'll be in town, we'll start reaching out to their reps.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindley.
I know it's already a little late. It's been a long session. I think we should take another five-minute break so we can continue with the last part of it. It's 8:53, so let's try to be back by at least nine o'clock. It's 8:53, so let's try to be back by at least nine o'clock. Please stop me if you have any questions or wish to pull an item. We'll start with the consent items. Consider approval of minutes for the Board of Trustees Workshop and Regular Board Meeting, December 11, 2024, 6:00 p.m. Number two is monthly financial statements and bond project report for November 2024. I'll move on to the action items. Donation to Parkland High School baseball program. Number two. Donation to the Innovative Learning Department. Number three, election order and notice of general election 2025. Number four, ratification of YSD contract number 20250094 inter-local agreement with El Paso County Community College District and Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center at El Paso. Number five, resolution regarding the Office of the Governor, State, and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Governance and Planning Projects, FY 2025. Number six, resolution regarding the Office of the Governor, State, and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Assessment and Evaluation Projects, FY 2025. Number seven, resolution regarding the Office of the Governor, State, and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Workforce Development Projects, FY 2025. And number eight, approve and designate non-business days for the 2025 Public Information Calendar. Okay. The order of the agenda has been approved. May I have an electronic motion on the consent items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration? May we have a motion? Let's see.
We have a motion. We have a motion by trustee Hernandez.
I don't see it. Okay, hold on. Okay, I see it now. Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. President, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second by Mr. Carlos Bustillos. Please cast your electronic votes. The results are in. Six in favor and none opposed. Okay, we'll go on to the action items. Number one, monthly, I mean, the donation to Parkland's high school baseball program. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hagerty. I do want to say that I personally appreciate every donation that this district receives. I definitely appreciate what it takes to make a dollar, especially in this economy. But this one hits a little closer to home, a little closer to my heart because the donation is for Parkland, the community that I call home. And so I know the impact that this money is going to have and that the kids that will be affected by Mr. Daniels' generosity. And something I'd like to point out is, if you notice, Mr. Daniels isn't doing this to promote his business. There's no mention of any business. There's nothing. It's just, he saw the need. He's willing to do what it takes to provide a direct impact on the kids who really, really deserve these opportunities that this money is going to provide. And $9,000 is a huge number, but I think that's overshadowed by the size of Mr. Daniels' heart. And I would just like to thank him, on behalf of myself, of course, but on the entire Parkland community, for his generosity. And hopefully, this is something that we can approve.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. I think it is a very generous donation by Mr. Daniels. And like you say, it not only helps the Parkland community, but it helps the SLEDA community as well to support our students in any way. All right, we've been at the discussion. May I have a motion? Mr. Hagerty.
Mr. President, I move to accept the donation to Parkland High School baseball's team in the amount of $9,000 from Mr. Gilbert W. Daniels.
Thank you. We have a second by Ms. Lucero. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. The results are six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Number two, donation to the Innovative Learning Department. Is there any discussion? No discussion. May I have a motion? Mr. Bustillos.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I move to accept the donation to Parkland High School baseball's team in the amount of $9,000 from Mr. Gilbert W. Daniels.
Thank you. We have a second by Ms. Lucero. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. The results are six in favor, none opposed. Action item number three, election order and notice of general election 2025. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hagerty. I do want to say that I personally appreciate every donation that this district receives. I definitely appreciate what it takes to make a dollar, especially in this economy. But this one hits a little closer to home, a little closer to my heart because the donation is for Parkland, the community that I call home. And so I know the impact that this money is going to have and that the kids that will be affected by Mr. Daniels' generosity. And something I'd like to point out is, if you notice, Mr. Daniels isn't doing this to promote his business. There's no mention of any business. There's nothing. It's just, he saw the need. He's willing to do what it takes to provide a direct impact on the kids who really, really deserve these opportunities that this money is going to provide. And $9,000 is a huge number, but I think that's overshadowed by the size of Mr. Daniels' heart. And I would just like to thank him, on behalf of myself, of course, but on the entire Parkland community, for his generosity. And hopefully, this is something that we can approve.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. I think it is a very generous donation by Mr. Daniels. And like you say, it not only helps the Parkland community, but it helps the SLEDA community as well to support our students in any way. All right, we've been at the discussion. May I have a motion? Mr. Hagerty.
Mr. President, I move to accept the donation to Parkland High School baseball's team in the amount of $9,000 from Mr. Gilbert W. Daniels.
Thank you. We have a second by Ms. Lucero. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. The results are six in favor, none opposed. Action item number four, ratification of YSD contract number 20250094 inter-lock agreement with El Paso County Community College District and Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center at El Paso. Is there any discussion? No discussion. May I have a motion? Mr. Bustillos.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I move to accept the donation to Parkland High School baseball's team in the amount of $9,000 from Mr. Gilbert W. Daniels.
Thank you. We have a second by Ms. Lucero. Please cast your votes. The results are in. Six in favor and none opposed. Okay, we'll go on to the action items. Number one, monthly, I mean, the donation to Parkland's high school baseball program. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hagerty.
I do want to say that I personally appreciate every donation that this district receives. I definitely appreciate what it takes to make a dollar, especially in this economy. But this one hits a little closer to home, a little closer to my heart because the donation is for Parkland, the community that I call home. And so I know the impact that this money is going to have and that the kids that will be affected by Mr. Daniels' generosity. And something I'd like to point out is, if you notice, Mr. Daniels isn't doing this to promote his business. There's no mention of any business. There's nothing. It's just, he saw the need. He's willing to do what it takes to provide a direct impact on the kids who really, really deserve these opportunities that this money is going to provide. And $9,000 is a huge number, but I think that's overshadowed by the size of Mr. Daniels' heart. And I would just like to thank him, on behalf of myself, of course, but on the entire Parkland community, for his generosity. And hopefully, this is something that we can approve.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. I think it is a very generous donation by Mr. Daniels. And like you say, it not only helps the Parkland community, but it helps the SLEDA community as well to support our students in any way. All right, we've been at the discussion. May I have a motion? Mr. Hagerty.
Mr. President, I move to accept the donation to Parkland High School baseball's team in the amount of $9,000 from Mr. Gilbert W. Daniels.
Thank you. We have a second by Ms. Lucero. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. The results are six in favor, none opposed. Action item number five, resolution regarding the Office of Governor, State, and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Governance and Planning Projects, FY 2025. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions. One is, we're spending $54,000 to create an incident response plan?
Who has that answer?
I'm going to ask Ms. Moy to come up. Sorry, my microphone's too far away. Ms. Moy stayed because she said you had specific questions, and she is making her way to the front.
Good evening. Port President Ochoa, members of the board, Dr. De La Torre, Diana Moy, Associate Superintendent for TIS. We have been awarded that amount specifically for the Incident and Response Plan. However, we, as a district, are responsible for only the 10% match, which is $3,008.54. This has been an awarded grant.
The way you read it was, the way you read it, I thought we were paying half.
So our Office of the Governor award totaled for this specific grant was $30,000, with the specific award $27,086.40, with a district match totaling project to $3,08.54.
So it's $30,000 for?
For an incident response plan that will encompass an entire revamp of the writing the plan. Our incident response plan has not been revamped in about 10 years. We've made some slight modifications, some updates here and there, but we really have never had a larger-scale revamp of our incident response plan. And so we're taking advantage of this grant now to revamp that plan to meet the requirements of the Texas State Cybersecurity Annex. Our cybersecurity now is a bigger topic where attackers are getting more innovative, more creative. So this is a perfect time to address those modern-day attacks.
Are we following any framework, any specific framework?
We will be working, following the DIR framework and best practices. This third party that we will be working with will provide best practices and that framework, modeling those frameworks so that we are specific in our plan. We establish clear protocols. We establish clear responsibilities and roles, how we're going to respond, and the steps that we're going to be taking. But we will be following the DIR model.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we going to submit that incident response plan to the state?
Absolutely. So it's a requirement as part of the Cybersecurity Annex.
When is that due?
It is completed annually. And so we have that opportunity to review our cybersecurity annex annually. So this incident response plan lives within that annex.
Would that affect our insurance?
Our insurance for ransom?
I don't know what insurance is we pay for, but I'm sure we pay for insurance due to any type of damage.
Sure.
Certainly, an attack like that would.
Right, that would encompass that as well.
But having that newer cybersecurity plan in place, would that help reduce the cost that we're paying?
So our premiums, we already have cybersecurity insurance. The plan has always been there. It just needs to be revised. So any discounts we're getting are already applied to the insurance. We can certainly check and say, okay, we've had a revamp of the plan. It now follows the DIR framework. Will you reevaluate and see if there are any additional savings that can be provided in the premiums? That's a good question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not on this one. So just wait there if there's any other questions in the next one.
Sounds good, absolutely.
There's no further questions. May I have a motion? Mr. Hagerty.
Mr. President, I will move to approve the resolution as presented regarding the Office of the Governor, State, and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Regarding Governance and Planning Projects for the fiscal year 2025.
We have a second by Mr. Bustillos. Please cast your votes. Results are in. Six in favor, none opposed. Action item number six, resolution regarding the Office of Governor, State, and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Assessment and Evaluation Projects, FY 2025. Is there any discussion?
I have a similar question. What is the Training to Enhance Cybersecurity Posturing Project? And how much is our applicable matching funds?
For this specific grant, this is specifically for the penetration testing project. So there really isn't.
The pen testing is the next one?
Are we, I apologize. We are in actual training. So yes, you're asking about what the training encompasses. So the training will encompass specifically our network techs. So that would be about nine employees that will be trained. This is, we will have access through our third party to a engineer that will customize our training, best practices, to especially or SLEDA-sized needs. So they will become the expert with our needs and what threats and how to prepare and any potential future attacks and how to ensure that our network techs are verifying that only authorized devices are being used, preparing them with accessing the network, et cetera. But really, the training is going to be specifically for our network techs, which is those nine employees.
So does it come with certification? Or what kind of training?
It does not come with a certification, but it does prepare them for that knowledge base that we are lacking currently.
Like what?
Continuous monitoring, incident preparedness right now, where you want to equip them with those tools that they would need to address those ongoing.
But we already have the continuous monitoring. I know you've installed.
We do, through our SIM systems, right. But right now, with the larger-scale programs that are out there right now, our techs don't have that in-depth knowledge that they would need to address those attacks specifically. So this specific engineer that would be assigned to us would be on-demand. The training would also be remote. It would be consistently available to us all year so that in the event that we need any specific support or extensive training or more in-depth training, we have access to them.
Access to the on-demand training, but not to?
On-demand training and scheduled training. But that would all be available to us.
Thank you.
This training here, it's penetration. Do you have training for detection and reaction?
That will also encompass that training. Yes, sir.
So they can detect the penetration, and then they have steps to resolve or mitigate any intrusion?
Correct. So during the penetration testing, that'll be a scheduled penetration test, which will be within a week. And we're doing it scheduled so that we don't interrupt any other services.
Yeah, but do you have, the training also encompasses how to detect those kinds of?
For the training specifically, yes, under the penetration testing grant.
And how to mitigate any compromise?
Absolutely. So they will be providing us with a report as well so that we could continue to train our staff with any weaknesses that they identify.
What would that cover? Do we already have an IPS installed? Assuming we do.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Do you already have an intrusion protection system installed? And I'm assuming we do. So what training is there? Do they just need to learn how to use the system?
Correct. It's mostly how to use the system and how to become, we, it's very superficial, the knowledge that our techs have right now. We do have that system in place, but not at the depth that is required or at the capacity that.
Which one do we use?
I can, I would be more than happy to share that with you after the meeting just because we're streaming right now. I would hate to expose the services that we use.
Not classified, but something.
Not classified, but just for the safety because we're that we're streaming currently.
Okay, any other questions? If not, may I have a motion? Mr. Dyer.
Which one are we at?
Number six.
Here we go.
going to respond, the steps that we're going to be taking, but we will be following the DIR model.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we going to submit that Incident Response Plan to the state?
Absolutely. So it's a requirement as part of the cybersecurity annex.
When is that due?
It is completed annually, and so we have that opportunity to review our cybersecurity annex annually, so this Incident Response Plan lives within that annex.
Would that affect our insurance?
Our insurance for ransom?
But I don't know what insurance is we pay for, but I'm sure we pay for insurance due to any type of damage and certainly an attack like that would.
Right, that would encompass that as well.
But having that newer cybersecurity plan in place, would that help reduce the cost that we're paying?
So our premiums, we already have cybersecurity insurance. The plan has always been there, it just needs to be revised. So any discounts we're getting are already applied to the insurance. We can certainly check and say, okay, we've had a revamp of the plan, it now follows the DIR framework, will you reevaluate and see if there are any additional savings that can be provided in the premiums? That's a good question, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not on this one, so just wait there if there's any other questions in the next one.
Sounds good, absolutely.
There's no further questions, may I have a motion? Mr. Hagerty?
Mr. President, I will move to approve, let's see which one it is. The Resolution as presented regarding the Office of the Governor's State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Regarding Governance and Planning Projects for the Fiscal Year 2025.
We have a second by Mr. Bustillos, please cast your votes. Results are in, six in favor, none opposed. Action item number six, Resolution Regarding the Office of Governor's State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Assessment and Evaluation Projects FY 2025, is there any discussion?
I have a similar question. What is the Training to Enhance Cybersecurity Posturing Project and how much is our applicable matching funds?
For this specific grant, this is specifically for the penetration testing project, so there really isn't.
Pen testing is the next one?
Are we, I apologize, we are in actual training. So yes, you're asking about what the training encompasses? So the training will encompass specifically our network techs, so that would be about nine employees that will be trained. This is, we will have access through our third party to a engineer that will customize our training, best practices to especially ORIS Letta-sized needs, so they will become the expert with our needs and what threats and how to prepare and any potential future attacks and how to ensure that our network techs are verifying that only authorized devices are being used, preparing them with accessing the network, et cetera. But really, the training is going to be specifically for our network techs, which is those nine employees.
So does it come with certification or what kind of training?
It does not come with a certification, but it does prepare them for that knowledge base that we are lacking currently.
Like what?
Continuous monitoring, incident preparedness right now, where you want to equip them with those tools that they would need to address those ongoing.
But we already have that continuous monitoring, I know you've installed.
We do our seam systems, right? But right now with the larger scale programs that are out there right now, our techs don't have that in-depth knowledge that they would need to address those attacks specifically. So this specific engineer that would be assigned to us would be on-demand, the training would also be remote, it would be consistently available to us all year, so that in the event that we need any specific support or extensive training or more in-depth training, we have access to them.
Access to the on-demand training, but not to?
On-demand training and scheduled training, but that would all be available to us.
Thank you. This training here, it's penetration, do you have training for detection and reaction?
That will also encompass that training, yes, sir.
So they can detect the penetration and then they have steps to resolve or mitigate any intrusion?
Correct, so during the penetration testing, that'll be a scheduled penetration test, which will be within a week, and we're doing it scheduled so that we don't interrupt any other services.
Yeah, but do you have, the training also encompasses how to detect those kind of?
For the training specifically, yes, under the penetration testing grant, no.
And how to mitigate any compromise?
Of those, absolutely, so they will be providing us with a report as well, so that we could continue to train our staff with any weaknesses that they identify.
What would that cover? Do we already have an IPS installed? I'm assuming we do?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Do you already have an intrusion protection system installed? And I'm assuming we do, so what training is there? Do they need to learn how to use the system or?
Correct, it's mostly how to use the system and how to become, we, it's very superficial, the knowledge that our techs have right now. We do have that system in place, but not at the depth that is required or at the capacity that in best service. I can, I would be more than happy to share that with you after the meeting, just because we're streaming right now, I would hate to expose.
Oh yeah, that's a little bit, not classified, but something.
Not classified, but just for the safety, because I, we're aware that we're streaming currently.
Okay, any other questions? If not, may I have a motion? Mr. Dwyer?
Which one are we at?
Number six.
Okay, here we go. I move to approve the Resolution as presented regarding Office of the Governor's State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Assessment and Evaluation Projects FY 2025.
Thank you. We have a second by Ms. Lucero, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, there's five in favor, one opposed. Resolution, I mean, action item number seven, Resolution Regarding the Office of the Governor's State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Workforce Development Project FY 2025. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, similar questions, we're getting a grant for $54,000, so how much is our applicable matching funds?
That would be the six, for the $55,000 award, the match would be $6,206 from the district.
So we're spending $60,000 for a pen test?
$6,000 for?
But I guess overall, we're spending $60,000 on it?
For the grant that was awarded to us, yes, sir. But YISD's responsibility match is that $6,000.
We can't do our own pen test?
Can we do our own test?
Yes.
I would like to say yes, but the idea of a third party doing a test for, would give us a better idea of where our vulnerabilities are and where we are weaker when it comes to those attack scenarios versus us doing the attack or the scenario ourselves, we get a better insight from a third party coming in.
And I understand this is a pen test, but what is the workforce development project?
The first development project?
The workforce development project?
I will have to get back with you with those details.
Because it says we're approving the cybersecurity grant for workforce development.
In the resolution?
Number seven?
No, it says workforce development projects, what kind of projects are these? I think you're working with training, but.
Right, so it's specifically for training, as we talked about earlier, to detect and mitigate those threats to just ensure the preparedness of our district.
This one's the pen testing one, isn't it?
Yes, the pen testing.
So I guess I just, I'm unclear on how pen testing also equals workforce development and which projects were.
Is it the development of the workforce? Is that what it's?
It's not the development of the workforce, it's more just to identify where we are weak in our operational systems or anything that is accessible over the internet. So if, the best example I could give you through that testing is anything that is open on our quick links, for example, our student information system, how, or publicly exposed servers, those is where, that's specifically where the testing and the attack scenarios will live. And in addition to that, it will also evaluate our firewall and how strength it is to include even our ports. So it's not developing, it's more of, we're going to hire this third party to come in and penetrate a scheduled penetration test.
And how you can resolve those?
To see how we can resolve it, and immediately after that, we will be given a report of the findings, which later will lead into how much more we need to train our staff to prepare.
A lot of it is mitigated by technology, but a lot of it can be mitigated by policy as well in training. The workforce is not, you know, not your passwords, how do you use it, what sites you can go to and stuff like that. So a lot of it is also policy that you have to work and write up as part of your mitigation plan as well.
And I agree with that, and that's part of building that cybersecurity culture, reminding not just our network techs and the staff at IT, but the district in its entirety of the importance of securing your password processes to keep the, your workstation safe. So it's just that knowledge and continuous training of building that cybersecurity culture within our district.
So that takes money as well as training the overall workforce, is that true?
Eventually, yes, sir. Right now, we are focused on just our network techs, again, because it's such a broad and deep system, we've never had in the IT department in-depth training for all of the programs that we currently use, it's all been very superficial. So this will give us an opportunity to give our network techs that opportunity for that in-depth training to really get to know our system and prepare them in the event that, you know, unfortunately, it's an eventuality, right? But it can lessen the impact if our techs are prepared with how to address it and what the capabilities of the system are, so that they can navigate it better versus just the superficial navigation of it.
And if you do have to make technology changes, that would be an added cost?
Yes, sir, it would be an added cost. We don't anticipate that.
That is not covered by this grant?
It does not cover that, but we currently do not anticipate that, we don't foresee that, because we do have some pretty good systems in place, as you know.
They've been updated.
I've recently evaluated those systems, and right now, they are strong systems.
Okay. There's no other questions, may I have a motion? Mr. Bustillos?
Mr. President, I move to approve the Resolution present regarding the Office of Governor's State Governor's State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Workforce Development Projects FY 2025.
We have a second by Mr. Dwyer, please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast, the results are five in favor, one opposed. Before I call for adjournment, I just want to thank everybody that showed up today.
We have one more.
Number eight?
Just, before we move on, I'd like to thank Mrs. Moye and Mr. Hagerty for your discussion on the cybersecurity. It was helpful, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Number eight, approve and designate non-business days for 2025 Public Information Calendar. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I'm a big advocate for transparency with governmental entities and open records request is a big part of how the public can keep governmental entities accountable. Can you tell us, what is the current requirement when somebody makes an open records request? How long do we have until we get back to them?
Good evening, Board President Ochoa, trustees, Dr. De La Torre, Mr. Hernandez, Priscilla Mata, Chief Counsel for the district. So currently, the way the open records requests are handled here at Eastland ISD, we have a record specialist that receives them, so she receives all incoming public information requests. If there's a question as to what records are being requested or whether those records are actually subject to public disclosure, she will loop my office in, I'll review the request myself. What sort of deadlines are triggered by a public information request? Number one, the requister, a member of the public is entitled to receive those records as promptly as possible, there's no hard deadline. Now, if you, as the governmental entity receiving the public information request, are going to take more than 10 business days, you have a duty to inform the requister and say, you know what, Mr. Hernandez, we can't get the records you requested by the 10th business day, but I promise to you by the end of the month, 5:00 PM, you can come and pick up a copy or I'm happy to email it to you. And so those are kind of the general deadlines that we have to work with. However, if a record that's being requested, or several records being requested, are subject to an exception to public disclosure, I have, as in-house counsel, 10 business days to request an attorney general opinion. So that protects the public, because that means that I can't withhold those records without first seeking an opinion from the attorney general and saying, Mr. Attorney General, under exception 551.503, the litigation exception, I don't have to give up these records, because we have pending litigation between us and the requister. And so I have those 10 business days to seek that opinion. If I miss that deadline, the records are presumed public. And so before this law came about, the reason why I'm coming to you, not for the first time, but for the second time already, to seek your approval of these non-business days, is because during the 88th legislative session, the legislature changed the law and said, you know what, a lot of you rely on, we're closed, so today doesn't count as a business day requister, give us until, you know, Monday, when we return to regular business, to get back to you. And so now they've said, you have to minimize that delay by now approving only up to 10 non-business days, in addition to state and federal holidays that are recognized under the Texas Government Code. And so they've kind of limited our discretion to say, you know what, that we're not open during the winter break, school districts, for example, you can't count every single day that we're out as a non-business day. Now we are only limited to designating 10 non-business days. And so this directly affects, to your question, Mr. Hernandez, this calendar directly affects how quickly we as YISD have to respond to a requister under the Texas Public Information Act, which is completely different in terms of timelines as compared to FOIA. Under FOIA, the federal government can take months, and it often does, up to, up to a year, I think. So those are some of the general deadlines that we have to work with.
Will you make a determination that, yes, we do have to submit this information, but it's not going to be ready in 10 days? How long do you have?
So let's say that the record being requested may be subject to us withholding it, because there's an argument about confidentiality. I have to submit my opinion to the AG by the 10th business day, and at the same time, I have to carbon copy you as a requister and provide you a copy of my arguments. I can redact my letter, so I don't tip you off as to what sort of confidential information I'm seeking to withhold, but you by law are entitled to a copy of my request for an AG opinion.
So the 20 days total, like would probably be the most?
No, it's that same 10 business days, it runs concurrently, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so the day that I write to the AG is the day you get your carbon copy as well.
Okay, very good. I'm looking at some of these dates recommended, a lot of them make sense. By the way, before I get there, there's a note that I can't read, because packet page 62 is stamped over the note, it says April 18th will be counted as a non-business day, unless, you said the weather, or what does it say there?
Yeah, so what we do, in preparing this calendar, I look at our academic calendar, I look at our school calendar. So the note you see at the bottom, the partial note, and I apologize that the page number is covering some of the verbiage, it basically says, note that April 18 will be counted as a non-business day unless we make it up as, we use it as a weather makeup day. So April 18 is going to be counted as a non-business day unless we have to use it for some reason as a makeup day.
Okay. Why, I think all of them make sense, it's March 11th, 12th, and 13th during spring break?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's actually one correction, Mr. Hernandez, that I wanted to point out to the board before you consider taking any action. Initially, I added October 13 as a holiday, as you all know, October 13 is federally recognized holiday, Columbus Day. It's also considered to be Indigenous Peoples' Day. That is not one of the holidays I'm allowed to add to our calendar as a non-business day under the Texas Government Code, and so with the exception of that correction, all other dates are permissible. So again, we get to count every national and state holiday under the Texas Government Code, and then in addition to that, you as the board get to approve 10 non-business days. And so this is what's being proposed, this is, this is basically following the same calendar I presented the last time. So strategically, I, I made non-business days either leading up to one of our big breaks or maybe during one of our big breaks, just to ensure that we have enough time and staff to, to respond to the public information requests that may come in during a break.
Thank you, that's all my questions.
Yes, sir.
I had a follow-up question to Mr. Hernandez, I'm assuming it's Section G, but which policy covers how much time we have to respond to an open records request?
That is policy, is it GBA? Yeah, I think it is GBA. We believe it's GBA, Mr. Hagerty.
I was looking at that one, but that one's the longest.
FL covers student records and FERPA, which, if I may add, FERPA records are protected even under the Public Information Act. So if you were to come to me and you're not a parent and you say, I want all disciplinary records for students, you know, Chris Hernandez, and you have no special right of access, I treat those records as confidential under FERPA, I don't have to write to the attorney general, I just have to inform you that I'm withholding those records under FERPA, because they're protected. But that was kind of a separate comment. But yeah, I think FL is for student records, GBA may be the one.
GBAA?
GBAA for public information.
Thank you.
Sure. And I have a revised motion, if there are no other questions, I have a revised motion, because I want to make sure that correction that I stated on the record is captured in the motion that is made, if any.
What's the revised motion?
So the motion is, the motion that I'm suggesting to capture the correction is to approve and designate non-business days for calendar year 2025 for the purpose of responding to public information requests under the Texas Public Information Act, and approve respective calendar as revised to eliminate October 13, 2025 as a non-business day.
Can you bring it to us?
I can, or you can just so move, if you wish.
Oh, okay. Move by Mr. Hernandez, second by?
Mr. President, I move to approve item eight as amended by Chief Counsel Priscilla de Mata.
Great, we have a second by Mr. Dwyer, please cast your votes. All right, results are in, six in favor, none opposed, and now?
I move to adjourn.
We don't have a second.
I second.
So done.